To call the council meeting now that all the council members are here to order. Sorry, one absentee is a council member I'll call up will not be here tonight. But we will, we have the remaining council members that we can start. We have a quorum. We called to order the June 28th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous peoples of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening. Mr. City Attorney, can you please provide a report?
Yes, the council met for the two items listed on the agenda. No reportable action was taken on either item.
Right, thank you. We would like to invite our guests to join council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Jay Chahal. Please come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America for which it stands, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, in the name of the Lord, peace and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chahal. We know you did a lot of work on the Bright Park and you'll be providing an update with for us with that. We would like to invite her, as is noted on the agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought under item one, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council issues not listed on the agenda so that we can avoid duplication and so that we can get to the agenda items in order. That way we can have a substantive conversation because it provides the background on which the staff will provide a report and then you can provide some feedback on what you hear on that council agenda item. So during public comment, we would like for you to speak on items that are not included in the agenda and if you can, please fill out a request to speak part and return it to the clerk. If anyone is speaking on any item on the agenda, I will request that you refrain at that point and ask you to return back once that council agenda item comes up. And once the staff report has been read, we will open the item up for a public comment and the clerk will announce your name for you to walk up to the podium to speak. Now in front of the clerk, there is a timer. To ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, we will ask that all comments be limited to three minutes tonight. We will give each person three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there are no applause, boos, cat calls or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask those that are in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct and be respectful, not speak in loud or threatening, offensive, abusive or other disrespectful language or offensive language that is condescending or any other way putting anybody down, that disrupts, disturbs or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will ask that you refrain from doing that if that happens. Now, this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council and each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Alfred Melbourne.
Greetings, City Council, Madam Mayor. My pleasure to be here tonight to say a few words in front of you all, our elected leaders. So I'm just happy to present to you all that progress report on Three Sisters Gardens. So recently we submitted, we put out an application for youth to participate in our curriculum, twelve week curriculum around urban farming based right here in West Sacramento. So we had over twenty-two youth apply and we selected ten from West Sacramento that are going to be joining us starting Monday. So congratulations to them and we hope that they're going to gain knowledge, understanding and be able to grow, harvest and distribute organic vegetables, hopefully wherever they go. But yeah, so that starts on Monday. Also wanted to let you all know that we were able to participate with our city manager with Emerging Professionals Design Competition for potentially a future home for Three Sisters Gardens. And it was amazing opportunity to be able to see what these professionals put together, architects, and they put together four amazing designs. And one of them consists of reusing the building on Fifth and C. And some of you guys might be familiar with the building. It's used to be storage for some of the fire department stuff, old fire trucks or something. Been a maintenance shop for quite some time, but we've been third in line for that building maybe, I don't know, too many times now, but we have a lot of good ideas that we'd like to implement and utilize some of these vacant open buildings. For us, of course, the biggest challenge is always going to be resources, right? We don't have a lack of vision and imagination, right? It's a lack of resources in the hood, we'll say. So, but I will be glad to let you all know that everybody selected number one and I would be happy to present all that to you once they provide everything to us and there's going to be a ceremony for the team that was able to win and we hope to invite some of you all out maybe to be able to see some of the designs at some point. I'll just speak on number one a little bit. It consists of bringing in shipping containers and having livable roofs, right, on the current spot on Fifth and C across from our farm, right? So we'll be having a big overhead shaded structure, right, so that we're not out in the sand exposed and we'll have shipping containers for our seed saving, for other things that will be semi-permanent. But yeah, I'll be happy to present all that to you guys. You guys should receive an email and hopefully you guys will be able to come out and join us. But thank you guys for hearing me, I appreciate it and be talking more to you guys later.
Thank you, Mr. Melbourne. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next speaker?
Robin Davis.
Hi. I'm Robin and I live in my hundred and sixty square foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. It was stated in the June fifteenth Seco Board of Directors meeting that of the five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in projected growth for the region, fifty percent of that is natural growth or birth in our region, thirty-seven percent is international migration and fifteen percent of that is domestic migration. Based on average income levels of our eighteen to thirty-five plus age demographics, where are we creating affordable housing for our current constituents? When looking at the growth rates in West Sac just over the last three years, about twenty percent of the growth is from the San Francisco region, which has driven up the average per household income. However, that does not help existing residents and alongside limited inventory, that is a contributing factor to why people can't afford to stay here. What are we doing to support our residents and their children who make up fifty percent of our projected growth rates? In June of 2020, plans were submitted for West Gateway Phase Two and they just broke ground for construction this June. It has taken three years to go from submission to breaking ground for sixty units. Countywide homelessness has gone up fourteen percent between 2019 and 2022 totaling more than seven-hundred-and-forty-six people as of last year. So if the average time to build is between five to eight years to completion, what will our percentage of homelessness increase look like once the project is complete? How worse off will we be if we cannot build permanent affordable housing fast enough? Tiny homes can be an interim and long-term solution and there are many jurisdictions statewide that are opening up surplus land and loosening zoning laws so that the general public can bring in their own affordable housing where the city and private developers can't meet these demands. This ordinance needs your support, council. This ask for reform is not an expensive one, nor is it time-consuming as we can look to inherit what's already been done elsewhere. It's a partnership that leans on innovation and truly understanding the needs of your community now, not five to eight years from now. I understand there could be an opportunity for public outreach down the road and we encourage that, but without having the knowledge of all these options at your fingertips, the tunnel vision and bias without proper education can impede your decision-making process. We want to help. I encourage staff to use all the information we have gathered while they create this tiny home on wheels ordinance to present to you on a future agenda. I hope that when that day comes, council, you will listen to the needs of the people and implement something that this region so desperately needs. Thank you.
Well, this is actually directed at him, Aaron. You buy this restaurant, which is privately owned, but you use city money to buy it, taxpayers' money, these people, and then flip it? That's, and then I just had a basic conversation, I mean, real quick with her about this data. They assure the data is going to be to your narrative about VIA. They're a base company out of New York. There is no regulation, so those people, you don't know who's driving you around town. Plus you have on the plastered on the side of their doors, the city of West Sacramento. So a lot of people are thinking these vans that are rolling around here are people that work for the city and they don't. You know what I mean? And I made, I've made a few calls about regulation. I actually had the manager for VIA call me yesterday. These people need to be UA'd because they're hauling kids around, they're hauling senior citizens around. There's no regulation, but this man over here gives them three-point-six million dollars, a million dollars more than last year. That makes absolutely zero sense to me, taking city money and dumping it into some service with no regulations. They're actually based out of New York, so there's no oversight here on nothing. So I made a few phone calls to the Highway Patrol in Woodland with the Northern Region Captain and had a conversation about this because these people are getting stoned and they're hauling around people in these vans. And then they said, oh, well, she told me, oh, they're, that we hear nothing but good stuff. Well, you need to get out there and ride with these people and you need to hear what they got to say about it. It's not as glamorous as people think. What you should be doing with that money is putting it in Public Works, the Fire Department, the Police Department and pay these people wages that they can live on and not be paying, you know, lots and lots of money for a restaurant. That's a private business that was owned by a family and I get that, but you're using city money, taxpayers' money to buy it and then flip it. Why don't you put it in other departments like with the police, the fire department or Public Works? The city is growing and you're not keeping up with it. I'm telling you right now, just by hearsay, talking to many, many people and they're not happy with this, you know, and if you go on any of the blogs out there, West Sac Bulletin, they don't have a lot of good stuff to say about what's going on with the city. I'm just telling you, because I deal with these people and I talk to them all the time. Thank you and have a great night.
Rhonda Pope Flores.
Well, he messed up my whole dang process of how I wanted to comment because when I heard three-point-six million dollars going to a private company, I'm thinking that could go to Bright Park, but I'll save that for item number four. So I am the chairwoman for a tribe that invested into a community that I was born and raised in. I went to Elkhorn, I went to Alice Norman, I went to then Golden State and I graduated from River City Senior High School at that point in time. I don't know what the heck they call it now. And I brought my tribe's resources back to this community. My reservation is in Amador County. This is Yolo County, trying to make a point. We bought the Bright VFW. We made it so that it's a place for the community because we have no community center. We've, I don't think we've ever had a community center in Brighton-Broderick. No, I don't, I don't think we've ever had one. So I thought it would be a really good idea to do this so that all these young people right here, all of these young people, I want them to come to the Bright and Broderick Community Center to have their celebrations and eat pizza and I want their parents to come and I want celebrations of life to happen and I want baby showers to happen and I want a place for all these kids to come to so that they don't go to gangs and they don't go and end up doing drugs because they don't have a place to go to in their community. So I am so beyond frustrated because we met with the city and you're, I know, don't direct my comments to nobody, but there were certain individuals that were at that meeting and we were told we could submit certain items separately from other items. Now, the things that we have to do are so petty and minimal, like half inch above the door, we have to raise the door even though the door has been the same size for how long the VFW has been here? I don't even know, it's on the historic register, so over fifty years. We're told we can't submit our encroachment permit, so guess what? Now we have to wait. I am so tired of the games and you are holding us back. You are holding us back from giving this community something good, something they have never, something we have never had. Stop holding us back. Let us apply and I know this is not the venue to do it, but I'm sorry, you all are going to know about it because I know certain individuals that are in the room that were part of this meeting. Stop holding us back and let us do the good things. Thank you.
Excuse me? No applause in the room, please.
We have no additional speakers for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our consent agenda item two to three. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentation by our administration? So, yes.
So Mayor, actually, I did want to at least direct staff about VIA only because there were some concerning comments made and I would just hate for any parents, kids not feel safe riding VIA. Are we able to hear at all from our staff regarding data collected or if there are additional questions around safety with our drivers?
City Attorney?
Well, you can't have a long discussion. You can ask staff for a little clarification on a point that's raised. You just can't have a big discussion among yourself.
Yeah, and all I'll say to that is there's definitely a feedback loop to provide, you know, user experiences on VIA. We have staff that manage that contract in our Transportation Division. We have a good relationship with VIA, so if there are specific complaints or issues with drivers that people are experiencing, the best place to go would be the Transportation Division to provide that, that feedback. They can start with me, though. They can always email the city manager's office, me, and pass that on. But we do get feedback, you know, all kinds of feedback on VIA, some mostly good, some, some complaints from time to time. We take those issues up with the company.
Thank you.
I'll move consent.
All right. Looks up a second.
Second.
Mayor Protem Roscoe moved and council member for Supizio Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call her over for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Supizio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
Thank you. This item is approved. Next is our regular agenda item four into capital projects, consideration of approval of professional services contract award to Verde Design Inc. for the design of the Bright Park Master Plan Implementation Project, CIP 62138, and delegation of authority to the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with Yolo County to receive American Rescue Plan Act funding. And we have our construction and facilities development manager, Mr. Jay Chahal, here to speak and present to us. And just for the audience, I see a lot of new faces here. We're going to receive the presentation and city council members can ask for clarification, but once the presentation is concluded, that's when the public comment, handwritten public comment cards is, is complete. After we open it up for public comment, that's when the clerk will read out the names of those in order and then once that's closed, we will not accept any more public comment on this. Bring it back to council for further discussion. Let me proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jay Chahal, I'm the Construction and Facilities Development Manager for the city and tonight I'm here to present a presentation on the Bright Park Implementation Project.
You got it. And first I'd like to start off kind of with the overview of the presentation. There have been many iterations of the master plan passed around since 2013, so.
Okay, because it's not working.
And I'd like to click, create some clarity on that. So I'll spend a little bit of time on the background of the project and how we got where we are right now. Then I'll move on to some community engagement and what feedback staff has received thus far. And then last but not least, we'll go over the design process that we're in right now and project budget, next steps. So some background on the project, the original master plan that you see on here on the screen right now in Attachment One on, on the agenda report, was created back in 2013. And in this plan, the entire master plan stretched over three properties and that's changed thus far. So it was over Bright Park, Alice Norman Playfields and Holy Cross and since then, the city has worked to implement this master plan as funding's been available. So this started back in 2015. Everyone can see that picture right there is from the Disney Kaboom park that was put in. So five hundred volunteers came on there and orchestrated that project. And then Phase Two, that was when the shade installation was done, the play structure that you see out there, the group barbecue area, this is like the community park element of, of the project and that was Phase Two. In 2019, significant, something significant happened with Holy Cross closing, so that play fields in question right there that were going to be placed there, that could no longer happen and that had to be moved to Bright Park proper. And then in 2020, Washington Unified School District's facilities master plan was updated. So the reduced footprint of the pool amenity that was on Cary Street, so we, we moved that to Bright Park proper as well. And then 2025, at the end of 25, 25 is our ADA settlement and improvements that needed to be done in there. So the first refinement of the master plan, it was, it was mainly done to align the plan with other efforts and leverage our resources and incorporate all the community feedback that we're getting. And the original master plan that you saw on Attachment One and the refined master plan, what changed here is all consolidated into one site, like I mentioned before. It reduced the footprint and you see the pool is right there on Cary Street on this iteration and then it was moved on to Bright Park proper recently. It flips all other soccer fields. This was kind of just moving amenities around within, within just Bright Park proper and not over three sites. The ADA issues that I was referring to, so these are all the orange dots that are on the site and in the previous Phase Three, these were amended, these were going to be completed and they're, they're pretty much all over the entire site here and the little orange square that you see there is the completed improvements that we have from Disney Kaboom and, and from Phase Two, which included all of the play structures and barbecue area. But that area is all ADA compliant. All the amenities, nothing has changed from there in Phase, in the previously Phase Three, it was all weather soccer field, sliding, dog park, fitness area, walking paths. The estimated cost for that at that time was eight and a half to nine million. And we've evaluated all of the ADA elements that I showed with all those orange dots and all the improvements that needed to be constructed for all of the civil work and drainage and electricity to the site. It really made sense to design this site all at once. So that started the design process. And staff put out an RFP for designing a hundred percent of the site. And what that means is having a construction set to build the site out a hundred percent. So no more phasing, this is going to be designed for a hundred percent design. In that, from the community feedback that we received thus far, there's a heavy emphasis on the pool, the pool and the all-weather soccer field. So the plan that you'll see here in the next slide and the few slides here does put a heavy, heavy emphasis on youth soccer and having that pool amenity in there and no more phasing for the design portion of this project. The outdoor classroom also on Club West, that's a significant add that was added to the, to the project and that's going to be, since Club West joins right, right next to Bright Park, having that outdoor classroom flow into the park was, was a key element that we added. Also, the tennis courts that are by Club West up there, those will be included in there. For that portion, that would be a joint, that's the joint-use facility that will be with, with the school district. The rest of the site will, will just be on the city. The last bullet point here, which is important to note in the design process was a thirty-year lifecycle analysis. This includes maintenance costs for all key elements in the park, including the community pool and support building. And what that means is when we come back here, at fifty percent designs, we'll be back at, at council to give a presentation. And at that point, we'll be able to give you a full lifecycle analysis of, hey, this is how much we're going to be investing into this park, this is what it's going to take to maintain this in the future. These are when things are going to be, need to be replaced and for an ONM standpoint, staffing, which what we need to increase to support the amenities here. So the design firm selection that's on the agenda for tonight, we see four proposals from landscape architect firms and we sent out the proposal nationwide. And we've evaluated firms on experience qualifications, proven ability, technical approach and overall cost. Staff's recommendation over reviewing all these firms is to go with Verde Design Group. Verde has done many of these sports complex projects for, for many universities and other jurisdictions currently that are doing the sports complex in Roseville right now and they have done several in Sacramento and also for universities. So with, with this being, with the neighborhood park section being almost complete with the Phase One and Phase Two, staff felt that with Verde's expertise in, in the, in the components that we needed now for the all-weather soccer field and the, and the designer that they brought on for the pool facility, that that needed to be emphasized. So this iteration shows Verde's proposal for the master plan. So this iteration shows Verde's proposal for the master plan. I want to highlight that this isn't exactly what... The components on this plan are what we're going to get. Things will move around based on community engagement. So there's going to be community engagement, there's going to be meetings onsite at Bright Park to go over where things go and what things we really want to focus on. The focus on here was for sports fields and the pool, like I mentioned before. So what you see here with all the lines on here is 24 fields, and an all-weather soccer field and the lighted softball, adult softball fields as well. One thing that may change on this plan from what is shown on here is the pickleball courts. Since this project was, its design was chosen, Verde's design was chosen for this project, West Taker Park also got their pickleball courts, so that amenity, we may want to add another field there or repurpose that area for that. And then, as far as placement of amenities, that's what may change based on what we find out in our civil work and while we go through the design process. The pool may slide down a little bit, and the field may go up there, but this was just an illustration to show that all the amenities that were previously proposed, with the dog park, with the amphitheater, and the all-weather soccer field, and the pool, that's all being designed at 100% right now, and there's no phasing. So for the funding to date, I wanted to highlight what we have. And from Burnvista Tribe, we have $185,000. $175 of that is for the pool facility. Another $10,000 of that is allocated for the West, for Club West outdoor classroom area. And then, all the funding that we have secured so far, we are at $15.5 million. The total cost to construct this site previously was estimated right around $31 million. So the gap between that from now and then, that will be, at that 50% design mark when we come back to council, is to, we'll be prepared to have a conversation on how we achieve that gap. And in this design process, there are elements that the designer has came up with that could be cost-reductive and get that number a little bit down, but to fill that gap, we'll have that discussion at that time. Next step, so the design contract, that's what we're approving tonight, and with the acceptance of the Yolo County funds, that was given to us. And then, we'll start our community engagement efforts in August and hone in the master plan as far as where the elements actually, everything goes in. And then 50% designs, we'll complete it in January, and that's the point when we'll be coming back to council with that cost analysis of maintaining the site and how we propose to fund it. And then, in spring of '24, the significance of that is 100% design's complete, and then bid for construction, and the construction starting in fall of 2024. That concludes my presentation, and I'll open it up to council for any questions.
Do you have any questions among the councilmembers? Mayor Potem Roscoe?
No, actually, I don't.
I do have a couple of questions regarding, can you put up the picture with Alice Norman?
Yep.
Thank you. So Alice Norman, I think, fields I see are included as part of the design plan, Verde, correct?
No, that's, so the only portion that's included on here for the three fields, three softball fields are on Bright Park proper, so none of the Alice Norman property will be touched with this.
None, oh, I see.
Yeah, current Verde plan. So right here, we're all, everything is on the Bright Park proper property. The only element that was off-site in the previous master plan was a pool amenity, but there wasn't enough space over there with Washington Unified's new plant facilities plan to house the pool over there, so we moved it on to Bright Park proper, so it's right up here.
So that reason why I asked, because I saw 26, and I assumed all of these things. Alice Norman Bright Playfield there, on the lower right.
I think there's a mislabel.
That's just our existing. Oh, is that mislabeled?
Yeah, I think that's a Google image that perhaps has the label on the... That's actually where the Kaboom playground is.
Because I know it's further south, like way further south, and then I saw a post-up here.
Yeah, right there is, that's all Phase 2, Phase 1 and Phase 2, I apologize for that.
Okay, okay, no, 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 don't worry, that's why I need the clarification.
And then, parking, I forgot to mention that, so the parking is extended, that's on the top left there and along Riverfront. There's also additional parking added over there with addition to our existing parking that's down by Phase 1 and 2.
Thank you. I had another question. So the pool is number 3. Okay, so the pool's included. All right, so then, I have another question. Why was Alice Norman removed? Because I understood why Holy Cross was removed. Why was, I didn't hear an explanation for Alice Norman.
So Alice Norman wasn't, you mean, moving, or doing any playfields or any of that?
That is not included as part of this Verde design.
No, it was, the primarily focus of this and Bright Park master plan was to keep everything on Bright Park proper for the purpose of this.
Okay, so that's the focus. Well, the reason why I ask is because I see the development of three adult softball fields, but nothing for the girls' softball field, and it's in desperate need of some attention. Because I've been out there, it's very, you know, a lot of girls play. And as far as how I see the direction of the city, making sure we have equity for our youth, for the girls, to have access, and I see three adults, and so the girls won't, it's a different type of field altogether. How do we accommodate that?
In that, I mean, we would be looking at Alice Norman Park and updating some of the fields over there. That's not part of this project, however, we can look at that into future projects.
That isn't, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, may I?
Oh, go ahead.
That isn't noticed on this particular item, but I understand that in prior years, I've made the recommendation. I know that we've had conversations about even integrating the girls' softball field with something like Rock the Block as a potential recipient of some of the updates, but, I mean, since we're not talking about it in this line item, it might be an idea that we could pursue as a potential product.
What I'm looking at is converting one of the adult, one or two maybe, of the adult softball fields to a girls' softball field.
That could be accomplished in this design. I mean, these adult fields are 300 feet. I mean, they're very large, they take up a significant amount of room, so if that is an ask from the community or council, we can make that recommendation and see how that'd be laid out.
And what I encourage there is the dimensions of, it's really the outfields that are in question there, the softball field dimensions of an adult-sized field versus a youth field. You're obviously going to have shorter fences. There's ways to accomplish that. We did something similar out at Bridgeway Lakes. We used to have a fence that was way out there. We actually removed it. Now we have a temporary fence. So there's accommodations that can be done to adapt the fields to be able to be used for youth softball as well. But I do think I'd go kind of more on a big picture. The Park's master plan, one of the key elements of that was evaluating the need for youth fields across the city. And we understand there is a greater need for both Little League and girls' softball fields throughout the community. And there are sites in the city where we'd like to, you know, look ahead to try to work with the school district or look at other parks to try to program more fields, but that's a bigger topic. As Jay mentioned, the focus for this design is Bright Park proper, but not at all to diminish the need for those fields going forward. So I think that's something that I would encourage maybe the council to have as a, you know, flag as a future discussion for strategic planning, where we look at, you know, further implementation of the Park's master plan with that focus in mind for field space.
And just to provide clarification for the public, strategic planning happens once a year in February, and it would be put on our strategic planning agenda, which is on the wall there.
That's just a suggestion, but I think for now, as part of that community feedback, you know, that's exactly the type of feedback I think we're looking for, is, hey, it'd be great if some of these adult fields could at least be adapted for youth softball. So I think that's something we would want to hear from the public.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much. I'm done with my questions. So with that, I will open...
Yeah, I was just going to clarify. And Jay, so what you're saying today, though, is that right now, we're just approving the design at 100% capacity, 100% of the design proposal, but we'll also be coming back in the future to discuss our capacity to implement the full phase or to actually discuss whether or not we can implement this plan, what our capacity is to approach. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that is correct. So at that 50% mark, the significance of that is to show the, is present to council all the data behind the project and show a cost to it, and show how much it's going to cost in the future, and kind of have a database decision of saying, are we going to move forward with it all the way? Or in what iteration are we going to complete the design?
Are there some components of the master plan that are required to be done at a particular timeline?
Yes, so some of the funding, majority of the funding is tied to the all-weather soccer fields and also the ADA settlement that I mentioned, so that's end of 2025. But a lot of that funding that we have received is for the all-weather soccer.
Thank you. You have a question? Oh, no, I'm not asking that. Go ahead, okay. All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk? Manuel Castro?
Sorry, I haven't had time to memorize my speech, so I'm just going to read it to you. Here you go. So good evening. My name is Manuel Castro. I'm a resident of West Sacramento. I'm here today to remind you all to keep gender equity at the forefront as you make long-term decisions about what gets, who gets what when it comes to parks in the city of West Sacramento. Specifically, I ask that you hold off on awarding Verde's design, a contract, until they show a design that provides adequate facilities for girls' sports, specifically girls' youth softball. The plan must include upgrades to Alice Norman softball fields for the program and that has been part of West Sacramento for over 60 years. The 2013 plan that he actually showed on there actually included Alice Norman at first, but then it somehow got dropped, and I hope that we're not dropping the girls on this one. Having said that, why do we need these changes to happen now? The players risk injury by running into these fences without caps. Our backstops are falling over. They're falling apart. The posts are bending and breaking. One of them snapped in half. The city puts on temporary fix, thinking that it's going to somehow prevent injury from happening. When these winds pick up, somebody's going to get hurt in that field. At least one backstop has missing or loose fence rails. One of the women's restroom toilets is missing a toilet seat. What woman or girl wants to sit on a stainless steel toilet without a seat? Now you think, oh, you just asked the city. I did. What was the response? Oh, due to vandalism, we're not going to replace it. Having said that, continuing. At least, what else? The fences are buckling. I heard these fences have been there, they're the original fences. The outfield field, somebody crashed into it, it was never fixed, it's destroyed. It's a safety hazard for anybody running outfield that direction. Our fields lack ADA access. This has already been noted, it's been registered with the league to say, hey, there's a concern here, my grandmother can't come to visit these fields. The only access is through some school that we're told we're not supposed to use that parking lot, so things are weird there. There's all kinds of other issues as well. So what am I saying here? My saying is that we hope that West Sacramento girls' softball plans to bring tournaments to West Sacramento, like the one that we're having on July 8th and 9th, are bringing multiple cities here. Out Grove, Rancho Cordova, Dixon, Davis, Woodland, Sacramento, Loomis, Lincoln. We're bringing 250 to 300 girls to the Alice Norman softball fields. They're going to look at that toilet seat and like, well, damn, does the city thinks about us? So things like that. I hope that we don't lose the field one that was suggested in the 2013 plan. I hope that we also prioritize girls in this new plan, Bright Park, even though it's not in Bright Park, added there because you value the girls. As a city council that values themselves and say, hey, we're all female, awesome! Then fight for the girls' rights to have access to an adequate facility. Now, I don't want you to turn into Davis who got sued by a softball league because they didn't provide adequate facilities for the girls, but yet they were doing things for the boys. So this is just a heads up. Please do right by the girls, not because of that, but because you care, because you believe in the equitable distribution of competitive sports for girls and boys. As a city council who prides upon being all-female city council, you believe in girls in West Sacramento opportunities to grow in competitive sports, just like our boys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Amsler?
Ladies of the West Sacramento Soccer Club, my name is Thomas Amsler, and I'm a coach for the West Sacramento Soccer Club. I stand before you today to address a matter of great importance to our community. The Bright Park Master Plan and the critical need to support the West Sacramento Soccer Club in acquiring dedicated soccer fields. Bright Park holds a special place in our hearts of our residents. For years, it has served as a gathering place for families, for recreational activities, the symbol of our community spirit. Today, I urge you to recognize the immense potential of Bright Park and the positive impact we can make by supporting our local soccer club. The West Sacramento Soccer Club is not just like any other club. It is a source of pride and unity for our community. Our club provides a platform to our talented young athletes to develop their skills, foster teamwork, and build character. By supporting the West Sacramento Soccer Club, invest in the future of our youth and empower them to reach their full potential. By including dedicated soccer fields in the Bright Park Master Plan, we convey a strong message to our young athletes, we have faith in you, we stand behind you, and we desire you to succeed. These fields will not only provide a secure and suitable space for training and competition, but also enhance our community once by raising the level of competition. Moreover, investing in soccer fields is an investment in the well-being of our community as a whole. Soccer is a sport that transcends barriers, brings people together regardless of age, gender, and socioeconomic status. By providing adequate facilities, we create opportunities for residents of all backgrounds to participate in physical activities, foster camaraderie, and improve their overall health and well-being. Furthermore, these soccer fields will serve as a venue for community events, tournaments, and local gatherings that will become a focal point for our residents to become together, celebrate our diversity, and build benefits of such a space that extends beyond sports, creating vibrant, inclusive community that we can all be proud of. In conclusion, the Bright Park Master Plan offers us a unique opportunity and invest in our community's future and support the West Sacramento Soccer Club by providing dedicated soccer fields. We empower our youth, enhance our opportunities, but promote the values of teamwork, discipline, and personal growth. I urge you to each consider the profound impact this investment will have on our community. Let us seize this moment and stand together in support of the West Soccer Club and the Bright Park Master Plan. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Aruj Ahmed?
Hello, good evening, City Council. Sorry. Good evening. Thank you. My son is here. He's very excited to be with me. I'm going to hold him up. My name is Aruj Ahmed. I'm a resident here. This is my four-year-old son. He'll be playing soccer for the first time in the fall. He's very excited. I'm out here, as you can see, with lots of other folks. I'm going to put him down. And, you know, I don't have anything prepared, but I just, I thank you, Jay, for your presentation. It was very informative. I just want to advocate for the fact that, you know, so much has come up tonight when it comes to like diversity, equity, inclusion, and just piggybacking off of that. For me, soccer personally, I've seen as like a great equalizer. It's a sport anyone can play. I know some of you have kids who play soccer, and that's true for many sports, for sure, but around the world, soccer, you know, is one of those things where you just need a ball. Or in the case of Pelé, you just need a grapefruit, right, to play in the streets. You don't need much skills, you don't even need shoes. And I think that I'm excited for the opportunity, like as Thomas mentioned, that we have at Bright Park, to really create this park as the kind of focal point of this community. It is. Bright Park is Bright Park. It's in Bright. So I am excited to partner with the city as a member of West Sac Soccer Club to be a key stakeholder in discussions when we talk about design and like the implementation and all that, so that not only is it clear that what the residents of that park want, but also the kids and the families that utilize this park year-round are also having a key say in the kind of amenities that will go in and, you know, how they're utilized. I think pickleball was mentioned, for instance, before it was a huge priority, but now we have pickleball at West Taker, and perhaps we don't need pickleball here. And so there's an opportunity, for instance, to convert pickleball into footsall or like mixed-use courts. I'm all about mixed use. I'm all about mixed use. Like, well, how can we use this small amount of space and make it do lots of different things to different people, right? And, yeah, so I, I urge you all to definitely bring West Sack Soccer Club, this is a club, to the table and in discussions with the group that you'll be discussing tonight. And, you know, West Sack Soccer Club, I will say, is one of the more affordable clubs in our region, comparing it to Davis and other places. They, these coaches have worked so hard to make sure that people have a place to play, even if they can't afford it, families can't afford it. So I want that to be taken into consideration when you're talking about the future. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Aruj. Do they have, Jay, do you have their contact information to reach out to them once you reach out to them? Okay. Iman Potter?
Hello. I don't really have a prepared speech or anything, but I'm very happy that we are adding soccer fields to Bright Park because Bright needs soccer fields, and I think it's a very good idea to be adding these. And I hope that you make sure that you get the grass evened out there because right now in Bright Park, the grass is very bumpy and lots of people fall all the time. I really hope you fix that. I don't actually have anything else to say, so.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Greetings, Council Mayor, once again. So, man, there's a lot going on here. We know that this is going to be huge for Broderick Bright because, as Rhonda said earlier, we don't have nothing out there. There hasn't been, right? And so this investment should be seen differently than a lot of other investments because, for all intents and purposes, there has been a divestment in our communities, and there's been a shift that's been taking place over the last couple of decades. And so when our area has been designated a food desert by the USDA, and you have a gang injunction in place for over 10 years over criminalizing our youth, right? So these are barriers upon barriers upon barriers that are creating obstacles upon obstacle for youth in Broderick Bright, and it's been that way for years. I'd like to offer myself, so some of y'all want to sit down and talk about that, you know? But I would like for us to all sit down and go over this plan altogether. I see that there's a great interest in the soccer fields and the female athletes. By all means, everybody should be included in this conversation, not just one, two people that get the attention of folks, right? Because we've been knocking on doors for quite some time now. Project Bright Neighborhood Association, right? Project Is a Community, Not a Gang, Project Lev, Three Sisters Gardens, Project Bright Community Action Network, right? Those are all nonprofits that have been working hard, and it's amazing. And for some time now, I, I'm even surprised how Three Sisters Gardens even exists, right? But we're talking about the Bright Master Plan. I want us to revisit this plan. I want us to consider a different type of investment, a real investment in the community. $30 million isn't enough. $50 million. Let's build something for generations to come. The pool in this description that you guys, you guys have here is lacking completely. I don't see one slide. I don't see one little sprinkler shooting out the ground. I don't see anything like that in this whole plan. And it's about to be 100 and maybe 10 here coming up real soon. You guys are going to see on Thursday, Friday here coming up, right? Saturday, it's about to be cooking, and we're going to just be out there baking in the sand, right, you guys? We need the pool now. All this stuff, 20, I figure in my best estimation, 2028, 2030, 2035, right? We need to talk to who all our connections are. When we go to Washington DC, when we go to the state Capitol over here, right across the street, you guys, the Capitol's right here, right? All the resources and everything we need. We need to be talking to the right people. I want a handball court. Thank you, guys.
Hi, Council members. My name is Hussein Idalati. I'm a coach with West Sack Soccer Club. I'm also an administrator. Just wanted to see, how many people are here from West Sack Soccer Club tonight? Could you stand up? Stand up. So we represent about 1,000 kids, 600 to 800 recreational players per, per fall, 200 growing competitive players who play year-round. It's exciting to see this project happening. One concern that I will raise is there's a funding gap of 15 million, and there's a year, I guess, till breaking, breaking ground. So the question is, how is, you know, the gap from 15 million to 31 million going to be made up? I mentioned that because at the Parks and Rec meeting, I think one of the members, Councilmember Hargrove, mentioned that when they were building Memorial Park, they had an $800,000 funding gap with a year to go, and we have 15 million. So that's, that's a big question in my mind. In terms of our club, we're looking for adequate turf fields just because, you know, you don't need people to line them every week. You can use them in the winter all year round. Right now, at Summerfield, where most of our competitive teams train, if you went there in December, it was a lake. I think it's great to get all the stakeholders together because there's many of them. There's soccer, there's softball, there's baseball, there's adult and youth, there's a school, there's flag football, there's Australian rugby was out there at one point, there's volleyball. There's a lot of different stakeholders, and I, and I understand that, that it's important to get all of us together to talk. I'm interested to see how that process will pan out and how the decisions will be made. I just, there's one statistic that I saw. Surf is a really big club. It's like all across California. It's national, actually. They host 35 events in San Diego at their soccer complexes. I went out there in November. They have one complex that I went out to. There must have been like 40 fields, 40 like full-size 11V11 fields. They generated $120 million for the city of San Diego. I want to just read off a list of parks in the area, cities in the area that have soccer complexes. Davis has legacy play fields, 15 to 20 full-size fields, Nugget Field, Community Field. There's more. Elk Grove has Bartholomew Sports Park, Oasis Park, Laguna Park. Folsom has John Kemp Park, Livermore Park, Economy Park, Lemby Park. Lincoln has Foscat Regional Park. Rancho Cordova has San Juan Soccer Complex, Mayfair Soccer Complex, Granite Regional Park, Harret Landing. Rockland has Kathy Lund Community Park, Margaret Acevedo, William Jessup. Roseville has Maidu, Cokeva, the $40 million complex that is just for youth soccer that has been proposed, and this same company is going to be building. Vacaville has Horse Creek Soccer Complex. Wolden has Senior and Community Center. There's a lot more. But my point was that West Sack doesn't have a proper soccer complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Memo Viejas? No, it's one, it's one, one public comment for each person.
Hello, Memo Viejas. I've lived in Broderick my whole life. I won't tell you how old, but take a guess. Yeah, I've coached out here for 35 years. I've seen a lot of the complexes that Hussein has talked about. Bright Field, other than changing how the fields go, has never changed. It's a great park. Again, I went to high school right there at that school. This looks great. I'm not a good talker. Just, you know, I'd love to see this before I'm done. So let's get on it. Thank you very much.
Guadalupe Garcia?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for making this happen and having this time. Like Memo was saying, I've been involved with the city in soccer back when it used to be called East Yellow, you know, and since 1988. I'm 43 now. And like my coach was saying, the fields haven't changed at all. So just want to thank you guys, and the plan that we have here is great. One of the things that I know about Bright Park is it's really dark. So at night, it's pitch black, and so lighting, I would like to say, would be a huge thing that we probably want to take, you know, a hold of and make, make it really light, light up over there. And just that, you know, soccer's been something for me to do. You know, I have a family of four, two, two brothers, one sister. We all played soccer. He's coached all of us. And it's been something for me to go to instead of, you know, whatever other things that are out there. And it's been all these years, like my greatest memories is soccer till this day. So I just want to thank you guys, and we have all the faith in you guys. So thank you.
Just have a quick question. Are there, is there a girls' soccer team as well? Yeah. There, oh, there you are. Okay, good. Thanks. Cody Potter?
My daughter plays.
Oh, she plays. Good.
Hello, Council members. Thanks for having us here tonight. This is one of the Potter kids that's playing. We're having four in West Sack Soccer Club this, this fall. That's my team, the eight, nine-year-olds. You can come join me up here.
Can I just start talking one letter in here?
A. A. We're very excited to be here. Okay? And like we said, we're, we're over 1,000 kids and families here in West Sack. Almost all those families have experienced a twisted ankle because of a hole in our fields, unfortunately. So we're really, really excited about this, about having, starting, starting with Bright, having Westacre really revamped and having some safe ankles, not giving Kaiser so much business. So there, there's a lot of excitement around soccer right now. We just had the World Cup last year in, in Qatar. Messi won a World Cup. Messi's coming to the US, right? We've got the Women's World Cup this summer. The next year in the US, we're hosting all of Latin America in a, in a tournament across the US. The year after that, we're hosting all of the best clubs across the world, across the US. And the following year is the Men's World Cup. So there's just a ton of soccer excitement, and there's a ton of it, as you can see, in our community here. And it's only, it's only going to grow. Boys, girls, we're all going to love this field and all the fields that you all are, are helping to fund. And so we really look forward to partnering with the city, with the local economy here. We've got a lot of big players, you know? We got UCD down the street. Maybe we can help generate some innovative solar lighting. There's, there's big companies like IKEA, Walmart, Target, Nugget, that we could start getting some of that money back, back into our fields and our parks, all the houses that have been developed and haven't included the best amount of, of fields. We can help, help fund this stuff. And we really look forward to, to joining the council and our community to making that happen. And like some others have said, we'd love to host some tournaments. Our boys here went undefeated this weekend at a tournament in Sacramento over near the Sack Courthouse. And we're really proud of them, and we would love to host a tournament like that here. And Bright would be the place to do it, but we can't, we can't right now. It's, it's really hard when the kids come and they're like, oh, so this is West Sack. And, but it's not. We all have a lot of pride. Leo here played his first game with us, and he kissed his badge. So that's something soccer players do. We've got, we've got pretty much the city logo on our badge. So we're out there advertising good stuff for our city across the state. Coach Hussein here brought a, a team two years in a row to the state finals of, of comp. So we're doing, we're doing our best, and we really look forward to partnering with you all and the rest of the community. Thanks.
Robin Davis?
Hi. So according to this presentation, we are several million dollars short for some of the phases. So I just wanted to add that the average cost per 670 square-foot unit for affordable Mercy housing on West Capital was around $350,000 per unit. The cost to have tiny homes on wheels is zero and can equally be counted towards our state required RINA numbers, as we've stated. So the implementation of an ordinance will open up more affordability and the market freedom for individuals to build, which could result in the potential to reallocate some city funds that may have been otherwise used for more expensive housing.
Excuse me? This is, the discussion is to be focused on this topic. You've already had a chance under public comment.
Oh, I'm just.
Can you please?
Get into it.
Well, okay, thank you.
And instead, be put towards funding projects for the north side like Bright Park. Also getting more infrastructure, increasing density, and land improvements increases the city's revenue to allocate for the area or ongoing maintenance costs for Bright Park. Also, love the mixed-use, multi-use comment. As a tiny home dweller, space for multiple uses is often more efficient and more affordable, so I'd love to see more of that in the plan. Great suggestion. Looking forward to paying my proportional park impact fee that will go towards this project and hopefully a cool dog park that my dog Ruby and I can hang out in. Thanks.
Thank you. Rhonda Pope Flores?
Okay, I know one of the people I really pissed off about the dog park. I'm sorry. But, hey, for me, it's, it's the kids first. I would love, Madam Mayor, to have on your resume that you were the mayor to finish Bright Park because we had a mayor that had a career and couldn't get it done. This has been way too long. This has been overdue. We have been under-invested. We have been neglected. We have been always given the short end of the stick. And our kids, all these kids deserve better. Look at their faces. I know they don't want to just play soccer. I know they want to swim in a pool. And I, I do, which is want to make one comment. When I was inquiring about the pool, going back to its original place, I could be mistaken, but it looks like there's tennis courts there now. I was told that the, the school district was not favorable to that. And so I'll ask for some clarification later on that. But yes, we do have a problem. We don't have enough money. And in the budget meeting, I saw 18 million. $3 million disappeared. I'd like to know what happened to it. I know I emailed city manager, and I wasn't happy with this response, so I'll inquire again. So 100% design, 100% build. You have a lot of work to do. You have to figure out how to find that money. All of you council members, the ones looking down, please hear me. You got to find that money for this park, for these kids. It's long overdue. This is, this is sad to hear some of these comments about they want to come here, but they can't. Well, I know what they're talking about because I played, I played softball on those fields and rolled my ankles, got a black eye from the uneven ground. Ball popped up and hit me in the face. So I know all those issues. It's just, it's too far gone. We have to get this done. I, I applaud you for getting to this point, but it's so far behind, and we have to get this done. So find the money, please. Look into whatever resources you need to do. Change the policies you need to change. And don't punish us by making us pay for ADA requirements. Those ADA requirements should be funded by the general fund, and the rest of those monies should be put towards our park. I have said over and over, our tribe will continue to donate money, but I want to see it get done. Please. I want to see that on your resume because our last mayor failed us. Thank you.
Matt Delgado? We have no additional requests to speak for this item. All right. I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for comments. Council member, early.
So I, I have less, maybe less comments, more questions, just, just clarifying because I, I do want to. want to make sure that I fully understand. So as Mayor Protim Orozco highlighted, and I think we were clear on, what we'll be voting on today is moving forward potentially, if we say yes, moving forward potentially this contract to then get a hundred percent design. Part of that work, though, will be community engagement, meaning that what we see here could change as part of that engagement. Yes or no?
I'd want Jay to return to the podium, or the podium as well, but yes, I'll start the answer. So what we're looking at today, all the components of the park are generally kind of set in terms of the feedback that was received during the previous Bright Park master plans, in addition to some input that was received through the larger Parks Master Plan that was more recently completed. I think the community input is more kind of the finer details at this point of where exactly we want things to be placed, how do we want them to function. We mentioned earlier about the idea of how do we make the softball fields adaptable if we have, say, an additional need for youth softball. So it's more in line with that. And then before Jay jumps in, I just want to kind of give some historic context, too, about how we got here, and he covered it in the presentation, but I think it's important to reiterate again. This was not the path we were on just a couple of years ago. The Bright Park Master Plan was very clear about a phasing strategy that was, you saw earlier in some previous slides, the council, most of you were on the council when this direction was given, there was an interest in, hey, let's, let's take the time to understand the full cost of building the entire park and put the council in a position to be able to, ideally, if we, if we do more work on fundraising, which, which by the way, of the fifteen-point-five million that is a hundred percent secured right now, most of that money has been generated in the last, say, four or five years. So there's been tremendous progress made in raising money for this project from sources that are not typical. There has been money from the state specialized fund, from the budget. This is not a project that competes well for grant funding, and we're so frustrated by that, just the way the state has their, their programs laid out. So we've really done a lot of work to secure funding that is, that is non-typical, including ARP funds from Yellow County, and I'm confident, I'm not promising anything tonight, because we don't know what that final number is going to be, but I am confident in our staff's ability and in the council's commitment to seeing this project through. And we do have, the one source that I'll talk about is Measure N. That's, that's the source that got Memorial Park done. That was mentioned earlier, I think the number was actually higher, but Memorial Park would not have happened had the voters not passed Measure N. Wouldn't happen when it did. So it's made for projects like this. We're able to leverage that with other funding, hopefully some outside funding, but the direction was given, getting back to that point, to not phase the design. We don't know yet if we're going to have to phase the project. There's a delicate balance there between phasing the project, because the components, the individual components could be more costly than our, than our current estimate, and then the council will have to make some choices, but we're going to tee it up so that you have all the information at your disposal to make an informed choice, and that's what getting to a hundred percent design allows us to do. In the meantime, we're going to keep raising money, and we're going to look for every opportunity to increase that, that current secured total of fifteen-point-five million. So Jay, do you want to talk a little bit more about the community engagement portion and how that may result in small changes to the design?
And just to be clear, what does small changes actually mean? Like specificity?
Small changes would be, there would be three community engagement meetings held in this design firm's work, and what those will entail of is, the first one would be presenting something similar to this to the community to get outreach. And sometimes that's done through like sticky notes on what's, what's important to you, and, you know, the components of this, as Aaron mentioned, they're all with their soccer fields, the pool, all of those have been well-vetted, and the community engagement to get to this point has, has happened over the, over the years. In this segment of community engagement, it'll be more location-wise. Where does this need to go? Or, hey, do we want to shrink this field down, or the, one of the adult fields down and change that to girl's softball? Those kind of discussions will be happening in these community meetings. There'll be three of those. The first one, like I mentioned, to get that initial feedback, they'll come back with probably two concept plans for the community to choose on, and at that point, then we would move forward with the master plan and then go into the design of that.
So then, there, there is a world in which, based on not only comments we heard here, but also in the community engagement, that particularly some of the equity components that, that obviously not only myself care about, but I feel like, in this case, I can speak to my colleagues as well, care about, and women's sports, as someone who played women's basketball, both in high school, whenever it's this kid, kids' age, as well as college, women's sports don't get enough love and definitely don't get enough investment. And so I would hope that there's space here for us to infuse that in. Why it hasn't already been infused, I can't speak to that, but at this point, could we?
Yes. The answer to that is yes, that could be converted over if that's a strong felt from council and the community, that could happen.
And Jay, just, and it could be, the fields can be adapted, too. The softball dimensions aren't such that you can't take an adult-sized field. It's not the same exact dimensions, but you can have the right kind of equipment to adapt defenses. And I'll just also say, just kind of the origin of why, why are there three adult softball fields?
Help me out.
It's because there's three adult softball fields now, and the goal with this park was not to, the park plan was not to take away amenities that are, that are also very heavily used. And I'll just go back to what I said earlier, none of this has diminished the need for more used sports fields. Even though we did Memorial Park, if you have kids that play Little Leagues, I know a lot of you do, there aren't enough fields still, even with what we did at Memorial Park. So the Parks Master Plan recognizes that. It looks for opportunities at other facilities, including, say, a facility like the old high school, where there's a large field space. Now, that's a school district property, and they have their own independent decision-making on it, but we have a long history, including this park, which is owned by the school district, of working with them to create additional field space, and we're going to continue to do that. For now, we're, for this project, we're focusing on getting it done and making sure all these components are a part of it.
I just a couple more. So in regards to, and I was curious about this, and I talked about it with staff as well, when it says natural turf field, natural or synthetic turf field, will there be an opportunity, or can, can I request, that synthetic be an option for all of them? Again, I, I don't know if that's, if we would actually want that to be for all of them, or if there is a world in which you'd want one to be natural?
Yeah.
Well, I know they used to get hot, but do they still get hot?
Yes, they do. So there is a, there is a significant cost and maintenance element to that as well, and there was interest in having some regular turf fields as well in this, but the cost of having all synthetic fields is much greater. And then the ongoing maintenance cost, I talked to our parks superintendent, who's on this panel for reviewing this, these fields need to be redone about every ten years, so that ongoing cost is much higher on synthetic turf fields, but that can be evaluated while we're doing this design process.
And, and then just, it's a part of the Bright Park Master Plan, so I feel like this is appropriate. In the meantime, there are things that we are doing as a Parks team to address the gopher holes. Yes, my kid has also sprained her ankle playing soccer. We've been, love West Sacramento soccer, by the way. We sign up every single year. We race to sign up every single year, but in the meantime, we are doing something about the gopher holes, right?
That is correct. Thankfully, Jason Paplo, our parks superintendent, and his staff have a good relationship with all the leagues, so they have direct communication with him into fixing those issues and going out there and dealing with the gophers. We know it's a problem, and it's always been a problem, but the active, the activeness of that is not going to, is not going to stop while all this process is going on.
And if I could, just a point of, small, small point of clarification. There are two adult softball fields. There's also a, it's sort of a legacy, they call it a fifty-seventy field, that was a remnant of the Washington Little League. So when we talk about three adult-sized fields, I believe the designer was taking into account, that field is going away. So there's a, there's a net three-for-three when it comes to the larger fields. There are two smaller fields, and that's in the area where the pool is planned. Just, just for accuracy's sake, I want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today.
Jay, where are you going?
Jay, we're gonna, we're gonna need you.
I can comment. We are so not done.
I don't know if I have any questions for you.
I mean, I appreciate you.
I was going to let you sit down.
He's getting his steps in.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I have a question. Do we have any goalkeepers in the room?
Jay, be stand up.
Come on, stand up! So I grew up playing on the Bright Park soccer fields and was a goalkeeper and broke my wrist, my first broken bone on the field, so we can't blame the fields for that broken wrist. Just don't punch the ball, it's not a good idea. But thank you, everyone, for being here today. Thank you to the coaches for everything that you commit to the kids. I'm supportive of this design contract, moving it forward. I just want to make sure that the outreach we're doing is above and beyond that we get this right. So you mentioned three meetings. Fantastic. You mentioned they'd be onsite in August. August is some of the hottest months of the year. Want to take into consideration being when and where these meetings happen, so people can come. People with young children don't typically get out when it gets super hot, so please take that into consideration. The stakeholders, it's going to be so, so important that our coaches and our tournament organizers from soccer, softball are involved in the conversation, and I think it's really important that if they can't come do the outreach meetings for scheduling conflicts, that we're reaching out to them, because the folks that are actually organizing the tournaments and playing on the field experience it different than someone like me who maybe just has a kid play or lives in the neighborhood. So I just, I want to make sure that the folks who are utilizing the space, you know, with these fields is really important, and a lot of them are in the room, so I just want to emphasize that. In regards to placement, I see the amphitheater really close to the neighbors, and so there could be opportunity, I'm hearing, that if the amphitheater gets moved maybe a little further away from families' homes, that the residents in that, in that area have a convers, are part of the conversation to make sure that they're comfortable with that if there is going to ever be music, which I sure hope there is. I chatted with staff coming into this. Parking is a concern for folks, and everything I'm hearing, we're getting adding parking, so parking is not going to get worse, it should get better. And then, let's see, what else did I want to make sense that we had this on conversation? I think that's it regarding, regarding the park, and I just want to echo our city manager's comments, we can see this through. We can absolutely see this through. There's so much opportunity for us to partner with not only regional businesses, local businesses, but, you know, we've got Sacramento Republic right across the river, and there are people that want to support our parks, and not just soccer, but all of these amenities that we want to bring to Bright Park. So I'm really excited to be here, and I'm happy to be able to approve the contract. While this is not the agenda item, can we chat about the Alice Norman comment that was brought up earlier?
I think as long as we stay in the context of the history of the item.
Okay, well, Mr. Castro, thank you for bringing to our attention what's the Alice Norman fields, and I think the conversation about how these fields could be utilized for girls. So I want to make sure we have these conversations. So I have a close friend that's involved in the women's soccer, the girls' soccer, and like you mentioned, there's a large tournament coming to town July tenth, ten-plus teams from all over the region. We cannot have a toilet that doesn't have a toilet seat cover.
I agree.
So can I ask staff to look into that and figure out how we can make sure that we have a toilet seat cover for that July tenth tournament?
You actually have your interim, one of your interim parks directors standing at the podium there, so I think he can, he can follow up on that with the parks.
Yeah, and Jason Paplo wrote that down, so he's, he's already on that, so he'll be, he'll be getting ahead of that, thank you.
That's, yeah, thank you very much for that.
And as far as the community engagement, or I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, absolutely.
As far as the community engagement that you asked, we are in, in, while we usually do these design outreach meetings, there is also a Zoom option that many of our designers have used, so if it's hot or somebody can't make it to present what we're doing to the community, having for the community, in addition to having it onsite, there's that option as well.
What, just on that note, as you're sending out the Zoom link, would love for you all to just send it to your, right, send it to your listserv. It is expansive, I get all y'all's emails. It should at least give parents the option to jump on, because I know having that Zoom option will be utilized.
It is a good idea to have that.
Yeah, and then the only thing is, the final thing I'll say is, I look forward to these conversations continuing. Park maintenance is really important, and we can spend millions of dollars on this park, but if we cannot maintain it and we cannot provide a level of service to the park and to the residents, then we're not doing our community justice. And so I look forward to these continued conversations and actually getting the numbers of what it's going to look like to make sure that the area is staffed and that services are provided and that we have all the activities that this park deserves. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for their comments. I do echo that sentiment, Councilmember Sopiz Yohol. We definitely want to make sure that every investment we make can be maintained so that we're not just, it's not one and done. This is, this is an investment over a long period of time. I gotta say, I'm a little sentimental looking out into the crowd tonight. Nobody's getting an award out here. Nobody's here, you know, because we're handing out a proclamation. You're here because you brought your families out, because you care about a place in this city. Everybody could be home or getting kids ready for bed, and you're here in uniform and for an advocacy purpose, and that couldn't be better. I'm up here on the dais because of Bright Park, because back in two thousand fourteen, one of my girlfriends called me to vent. She worked for Disney and said that she had a park project in San Jose, and it fell through, and she was crying, and she didn't know what to do, and I said, I'll take the park project. And she said, what are you talking about? I said, you're building a playground, right? She said, yeah. I said, well, we'll take it in West SAC. I know exactly where it's going to go. And so a few phone calls later, we were already in process to build our first Disney Kaboom project, and it was even more special because people just like you came out and put on a turquoise, and the mayor and I, we put on a turquoise shirt and got dirty and built a park together. And that was the beginning of some pretty important investments, you know, shade structure, these things do happen over time, and it's unfortunate that Bright Park is situated. It's, it's a very, there's so much opportunity for the park, but because of its location to a very affluent area, it's very difficult for us to get grant funding for the park. So a lot of people might look at the south side, and well, all the money's going over there. Well, every time you build a new development, the developers put in money for impact fees for like parks and stuff, and so you got all these new parks, which looks very, very unfortunate, and yet there's just not a lot of development on the north side, because it's all been built out for a long time. So when I look at this line item tonight and I hear all the speakers, I am just filled with pride, because there's finally something we can talk about with our beloved gem and our biggest park, the one that serves thousands of children every freaking year, many of whom are here tonight. As a parent of children who bring me to that park three to five days a week now, looking out in the crowd and looking at my coach, who, who's been, you know, coaching for thirty-five years, and his colleagues out there that are dedicating hours of their life for free every freaking day, who come to honor one of our civic leadership awards this year for community and commitment. Aruj Ahmad was, is right. She's, she's, soccer is one of the greatest equalizers. And by the way, Hussein, you forgot Ted Lasso, soccer's life, right? Anyhow, football, football's life. But not to advocate tonight for any particular purpose, I just want to say that I understand that the twisted ankles and the lack of lighting, I know that it's also complicated, because sometimes homeowners don't like the lights, the floodlights, you know, shining into their, they want to sleep, and so we have to be conscientious of who it is that lives around our park. But I just got to say that I, I'm looking forward to coming back. This is something that came upon us, and, you know, when we looked at Memorial Park with the ADA, we had a crowd out here, too, and it was like, don't take, don't take away our park. Well, we don't want to, we want to improve it, and this is an incredible opportunity and a perfect impetus for us to do that. How we're going to make decisions about the resources, we'll get there. I do have a lot of hope that we can find resources, especially with a whole bunch of people here tonight that all have ideas that they can bring to us to consider as well, and I am proud to sit amongst a council of people who truly do care about this investment. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Orozco. My turn. First of all, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank the founders who have been beating the drum on the improvements in Bright Park, the Castorena family, who they have been the Castorena family, who they have been advocating. I remember moving here and seeing the beautiful recreation center, but I didn't know the story of what, what happened. And it took me some years to learn and unravel a little bit of the layers of information, misinformation out there. And being on council and advocating on behalf of the bright and Broderick community as well, that's what brought me up here, to be, to be a champion. Councilmember Alcala was really hoping to be here, but she has a family emergency to deal with. She also has been a champion. And on her behalf, I just want to say that, you know, she, she wholeheartedly wants to see what happens here come to fruition yesterday. We are a long time coming and way overdue. And I really appreciate to see that we have directed some attention to Bright Park finally. But I also see, you know, looking at everyone here and those that are not here tonight, those that could not make it. I also have been hearing from the community and speaking with the community over and over the, every year, some of the unmet needs, which I think if we nip out Alice Norman or any other sector, I think we are overlooking what the community has been demanding for years. And I don't think we can, I can feel justified in completely, I will approve it tonight, but completely, wholeheartedly feel that we are making the progress that we should be making on behalf of our community. And I want to say thank you to all, observing how wonderful and, you know, you all are listening to this, you know, meeting. We've been sitting here for over an hour and how you've been attentive and interested and engaged. This is civic engagement, this is what we dream of. And us as an all-female city council, and Jay, you know, you're on the spot here for over an hour too, you're doing well. I just want to say, we, we are champions on behalf of the girls. We have, we have children too. I have my twins and I have a little, you know, little granddaughter, and she's a feisty one. But she also does need at some point in the future, a place out in the field to play. A place that is safe, a place where she can bring teammates, a place where she can grow to be confident and build her self-esteem, a place that's her home, that's going to accomplish what is going to be her future endeavors. That's where we all start, we all start at home. And I, and I really regret and would like to apologize on behalf of what's happened historically in not making those dreams come true for Bright Park for all these years. But I also want to be able to find a way to move forward and include Alice Norman as part of this plan, as part of the Verde design. And I would, I would, you know, appeal to my, to my colleagues here to find a way to make this addition because we cannot be trimming and saying we've accomplished this mission. Because I don't think that is, that is factually correct, given what I've seen historically. Alice Norman does need to be included. I don't think these other three fields will be able to accommodate the fit that Alice Norman currently has. They need the four fields to be dedicated to the girls because that allows for them to, to play together. This, these three do not meet that size, unfortunately. So we, if, so even if we converted one, it wouldn't accommodate the goals of the all-girls field. So I think we need to stretch it out and include, and I just want to, you know, hear your, your feedback on that right now.
Feedback on that would be, for Alice Norman Park, we can have a separate workshop on that and try to come up with a plan for those fields. However, I hear you loud and clear that this, these fields wouldn't be able to be converted in the, in the way that is needed for a girl's softball. However, the, the infield can, I mean, the fences can be put in there for, for you to increase youth sports. However, in this plan, I mean, we're pretty much moving forward with Bright Park, but Alice Norman at a future item, we can bring that back.
Yeah, I mean, we have a design contract ahead of us that was bid as a design contract for Bright Park and is ready to move forward at a very aggressive schedule with the goal in mind to build this park. If there is consensus to take a step back and look at adding additional scope to the contract, we'll need time to do that. We don't have, we have, we have, cost us about $30 million and $15 million right now. I'm just going to bring a sense of reality to this, this conversation. We have a huge task ahead of us to build what we have in front of us. It's, again, not to diminish at all the need for future play fields. We need more Little League fields, we need more girls' softball fields, we need more adult softball fields. It's also one of our heaviest utilized areas of this park. And keeping in mind, adult softball does not mean men's softball. It's, we, I played on many co-ed teams at Bright Park before, so just want to, you know, I, I get the comments, but as, as the manager here, you know, looking to move this thing ahead, I think it would actually be a step backward in terms of the time and scope of this project to add additional facilities to it at this point. The council has ways to prioritize projects and give direction to staff to move ahead on other, other components. And that's why I made the suggestion earlier that I think that's, that's a conversation the council should have. It doesn't have to be with strategic planning. You know, we're adopting a two-year budget tonight with the CIP. I mean, that could be something that, as part of the context of that, you direct us to go look at opportunities for the park across the street. But for, for the purposes of tonight, to move this thing forward, I would, I would heavily encourage the council to go with the scope of this contract and proceed as aggressively as possible with the schedule. And again, look at future opportunities through the Parks Master Plan to bring additional fields to fruition.
Thank you. And to reiterate kind of what Erin was mentioning on timing, a lot of our funding has timing components to it too. So pushing this forward and keeping to that grant, to the grant schedules is, is very important.
I do understand, I think the ARPA funds is the one that is, is the one that is, you know, it was dedicated to Bright Park.
Correct.
That and, and the, the federal funding as well has a, has a timeframe as well.
Yeah, along with that, the, the federal funding that we received, the 750 and then the other 1.5 million is also a time limit on those fundings.
So in taking a look at the timeline, what are we, I, can you give me the, this timeline again?
Going backwards, sorry. But right now, we're in June and that design will be completed. And then community engagement in August, 50%, that's when we're going to come back and, and to council with that cost in, in January. 100% designs in spring and bid out to construction summer '24 and fall '24 is construction.
The other thing to keep in mind, if I could point out, Alice Norman Park also has the old fields from Washington Little League, so it's, it'd be a much bigger scope than, than just the softball fields. I think we, Jay and I would both recommend that if you take up an additional project to improve the softball fields, you should also look at the Little League fields. We have some small ADA work that we're doing to those fields very soon, but it really would be, it deserves its own, you know, sort of planning effort and fundraising effort that, that doesn't necessarily need to be linked to Bright Park. You, you don't lose anything by, you know, directing a separate project while this moves ahead. It, it just means, you know, but conversely, if, if we did take a timeout to say, hey, go add the scope of that whole park, you're talking months of work and, and with no, with no additional gain of funding and even more uncertainty to be able to deliver the park that you have in front of you for the price tag that we think it's going to cost.
Well, I'm, I'm, excuse me, Manuel? Manuel? Okay, Manuel? Manuel? refrain from public comment at this time, thank you. So in, in taking a look at this decision that was made today, which I don't recall saying we could exclude Alice Norman in the, in the past, I don't recall a time when we said it was okay to move on with just Bright Park alone.
I'm not actually sure, do you know when that took place? It was before my time, I believe.
No, that was before, way before me, that was back in...
So Mayor, I don't know if you were a council member at the time, or maybe it just preceded all of us. I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think it happened as a public decision, I think it was...
I have no idea, I just got here.
Right.
And again, this, this has, this has nothing to do with, you know, the prioritization of, of one type of sport over another. The council's been very clear to this point that we want to move aggressively with the design on Bright Park. And here we are, following up on that direction.
Right.
I'm simply pointing out that if you change the scope to add additional park facilities to the plan, we have to go back to the consultant, we have to redesign, add time, add scope to the project. There's no reason it can't be done in parallel if there's consensus among the council to start a process on, on Alice Norman. There's, there's additional needs that include both the Little League fields and the girls' softball fields and the play structure and other facilities there.
Would we have to work with Washington Unified, or are we able, do we have carte blanche to do that work as well?
We would work with Washington Unified under the joint use agreement that we have. We include them in all the conversations, the, for like Bright Park, for instance, we included them in the conversations for the pool and everything else. They didn't want interest in funding any of that, so that was brought back to the city. But it would just be under the current joint use agreement. But as Erin, Erin mentioned, on Alice Norman, there are several other things that need to be looked at if we do the softball fields, irrigation, all the underground, there's also the restroom, so it turns into an entire project and it really needs to look at that.
How long will it take for you, you think, to come back with the plan for that one? Separate, if it was separate, but you said parallel to some extent, I don't, I don't, I don't understand what that means.
To present like a workshop or, or if, if we got a direction from council to move forward with, with prioritizing that, we can, we could come back with a workshop, I believe.
And when with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'd be similar to anything we take on as a new initiative. The difference here would be, you wouldn't be waiting to have strategic planning be the impetus for it. I think, you know, we have to, we have to understand that the Parks Department is tasked with a huge number of projects right now, including West Acre, this park, Heritage Oaks Park. So we have to take a look at, at the ability for our staff to go, you know, out and aggressively pursue a new design contract. And keeping in mind also, we don't have funding identified for that additional work. So again, nothing about the importance of it, nothing about the equity issues that have been talked about whatsoever. Just this is, this is what the path we've been on and to switch course now means additional time, additional money when we're facing a project that already costs double, at least double what we already have in terms of funding.
I just, we've had extensive conversations focusing on Bright Park over the last several years in, in our strategic planning session. And invested a good amount of time discussing where we would be and hoping for a moment like tonight to talk about the design. And we're actually at, talking about 100% of the design as opposed to just a portion of it, so I'm really proud of that. I just really wish I would have heard this type of advocacy prior to tonight because I don't want to hold up the project that we have before us in order, that's not to argue that, any merits of it, because I think that you could canvas, and I'm not going to. But everybody would argue that that's an absolute priority. It's just a matter of when we should, and how we're going to afford to do it. And I think that needs to afford, be afforded in a different discussion, separate and apart from Bright Park's discussion tonight.
Mayor, if I could, a couple of things. One, city attorney, I was kind of sidebar here, we do have to kind of rein it in to keep this about the Bright Park discussion because that was the scope of this item, but I will say it was discussed earlier, I think Vice Mayor Roscoe brought it up.
Sorry, city manager, I disagree. Bright, Alice Norman was included in the Bright Park Master Plan, so it's...
We're not actually positive about that.
Yeah, that, the softball fields. Entire fields were...
It was on the map, that's why.
That was just a, that was just a field in there, it wasn't...
One field.
No, 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 but it was included in the 2013 design.
Jay can show you this. And then the second suggestion I was going to make while Jay's bringing up the slide is that I think the vice mayor brought up the opportunity we have, we have two years of Rock the Block. And there's a lot of field improvements and a lot of basic improvements that could be accomplished if that was the focus of that program. So that's another option we could look at in the short term while we're, while we're, if, if the interest of the council is to go forward with something. But again, we want to keep this in the context of the Bright Park project and Jay has the slide there that shows...
In that slide, it just shows, so the play fields are not on there. The highlighted portion shows just the outfield, field that's out there. And that was to add one more of the adult field there at that point. That's what it, that's what it shows.
So then just to clarify, Alice Norman was not included, ever?
So, I mean, the play fields that are in question right now for girls' softball, that's that blue line, that's kind of right on the, on the screen there.
Yeah.
That's, that's where those play fields are. Those aren't highlighted in this plan at all. The open field next to that, that was, that's open, that, that's where that improvement at that point was. And that was due to just fitting, fitting another field there. It wasn't improving any of the existing stuff that we have.
And in the context of the Bright Park Master Plan, we have our former Parks Director Tracy Michael, who can offer some additional historic context, that would be helpful just in terms of what was looked at and what wasn't with the Bright Park plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, if Tracy was to come up, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So many years ago, when we worked towards implementing the Bright Park Master Plan, we, we focused on the Bright Park proper site because we had ADA improvement requirements. And it was discussed that it would be a missed opportunity to make those ADA improvements and not accomplish some portion of the Bright Park Master Plan. Those ADA improvements are all on the Bright Park main site. And so, given the resources we had, we were focused on trying to make as many of the master plan improvements on the main Bright Park site as part of those ADA requirements. And through that process, we received additional input from the community and from the school district that continued to help us refine the proposed improvements for the Bright Park site. Alice Norman was included in the original master plan, but not the portion that has come up this evening. And we have been working with Habitat for Humanity to define multiple improvements over the years. In fact, we were going to have some major improvements made in 2020 that had to be canceled. And so we've been working with the Habitat for Humanity team to identify electrical upgrades, restroom improvements, the concession building improvements, and even more as part of hopefully the next Rock the Block event.
This fall?
Yes. But, but I know that there's still a lot of design that has to be done as part of that and that, and that's still very much a priority for us. But, but the ability to focus on the Bright Park site right now because we know we have a number of requirements that we have to meet, both from grant funding and ADA improvements.
I understand that, I understand.
So that's, that's why, that's how we got to where we are today.
Right, right, I get that.
I hope that helps to clarify.
Well, it was just confusing because I did hear that Holy Cross was also part of the master plan. And then I see Alice Norman, and my impression was it was included in the year 2013, but it seemed like it was excluded and I didn't understand why. And now we're focused on Bright Park proper, but somehow that decision was made. And I, and I know we've been talking about it, as the Mayor Portem referenced, we've been focused on Bright Park as part of the discussion, but it wasn't my intent in that discussion to exclude Alice Norman, even though, you know, it's happening now and we didn't hear from anyone before. Because, you know, those conversations were not public, so we didn't hear from anyone, that's...
We, we do have...
We are now.
We do have those improvements in our Parks Master Plan, it's part of our 10-year CIP. So it's, it's definitely on the radar, it's just really about timing and opportunity. And we are always looking for, you know, funding opportunities that fit the project. So there might be some out there that, that are, we don't know about right now, that could help to advance that project. But right now, we know we have very specific funding commitments for Bright Park, both in terms of grants and other partnerships and the ADA improvements that need to be met in a very short period of time.
Okay. Well, I'd like to be able to see Alice Norman accelerated, other, you know, rather than not have a definitive time, but find a way to accelerate it, approve what we have here, but accelerate Alice Norman, not wait for whenever it fits in our schedule.
I, I, if I may, Madam?
Sure, go ahead.
Tracy, we walked the girls' softball fields back in 2020 with the hopes of, of actually giving it a fantastic facelift and changed some of the electricity. So it is on the radar, it is identifiable as a potential project for Rock the Block once we have it coming back, maybe even phased over several years of the, the Rock the Block program that we have. I see John Archuleta in the, in the, in the audience, I see other folks that are advocating for children in our community. And what's to say that we can't paint the, you know, rebuild that park and not wait for another workshop like this? We have the ability, we've, we've actually shown it with the play structure that we built at Bright Park already, that we, when we do something together, can make something happen. So I think this is an opportunity for us to reinvent our thought...
So I think this is an opportunity for us to reinvent our thought processes and I'm glad this conversation happened.
I agree. Thank you, Mayor Protem Roscoe. I agree that, yes, we, I think we have what we, what we can do to accelerate it and get it done, because I don't want to wait another year, two years. I mean, it's, this plan, it's already 2013. This is 10 years ago. 10 years ago.
I would like to add also that we are making improvements to Alice Norman right now to the play structure. We had that as part of our shade structure program. As we move forward with the shade component, we realized that the play equipment was pretty subpar. And so we have an existing CIP to actually replace the play equipment that includes a shade component. So that feature is moving forward right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. There are no other comments? I think, Mr. City Manager, do you have any feedback on what's been directed as far as what we've expressed?
Well, I think, I think the, just to recap, you know, the, the task we have for the next six months is clear. We're going to bring back 50% designs, 100% designs for the entire park, put the council in a really informed position about what's possible, work on the funding in the meantime, look for opportunities with Alice Norman Park to both do interim improvements, but also we'll have follow-up discussion about what the plan might look like to put the council in a position to do something more thorough in the, in the proper way. But I also want to just kind of, you know, remind everyone from where we were, you know, to where we are just in a very short time with this council. The fact that we have $15 million that we didn't have allocated to this project just a few years ago, and we have this design contract set up with a plan to hopefully deliver what will be the most, you know, really impressive park facility we have in the city by far and for the whole community and for the neighborhood. And I think our staff team, speaking for them, I know how hard they've worked on that process and I'm really proud of them for that. I know we can always do more, but let's not, let's not overlook where we were just a few years ago, where we are today. So I just want to end with that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, on that note, I would like to move to recommended action.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Roscoe. Early seconds. All right. Councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
I just want to add that feel free to do what it takes to repair the bathrooms and everything now. And take it out of my stipend if you have to.
Aye.
All right, this item is approved. Next, we will go to item number five, road maintenance workshop in consideration of Resolution 23-41 establishing a list of fiscal year 2223, 24 projects funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. And.
Thank you all for coming.
Capital Improvement Manager, Mr. Gary. Sorry, I wasn't sure who was going to be doing the presentation. Please, please come up. We have both Public Works and Capital Improvement, Capital Projects. Thank you so much.
I am so excited for this presentation, y'all. Well, I appreciate that. I'm not going to take offense that everyone left. No, you have a captive audience. I'm. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Ariana Dami, Director of Capital Projects. I'm joined tonight by William Roberts, sitting behind me, Director of Public Works of Operations and Maintenance, who will be presenting, co-presenting tonight. The purpose of this presentation is to help provide information regarding Senate Bill One, funding, or what we refer to as the gas tax. It's also to provide some insight on the city's road maintenance program and capital projects that are specific to improving the condition of roads. Sorry about that. There we go. For tonight's presentation, I will begin by providing overview of the importance and benefits of maintaining our roads and a quick overview of SB One. And Mr. Roberts will provide information specifically on the road maintenance program, and I will close out the presentation going over some of the capital projects we have currently approved, what we have planned, and what we have proposed. There are several reasons why it's important to maintain and prioritize road condition. First, connectivity and mobility. West Sacramento is a growing city with a significant population economic activity. Well-maintained roads ensure efficient connectivity within the city and to neighboring areas. This allows residents to easily access schools, workplaces, shopping centers, and recreational facilities, promoting seamless mobility and enhancing the overall convenience of daily life. Two, our riverfront development. West Sacramento is situated along the scenic Sacramento River, offering opportunities to riverfront development. By maintaining our roads leading to the riverfront areas such as Riverwalk and Centerfield Health, the community can attract visitors and residents, boosting local businesses and generating revenue. Additionally, well-designed roads in those areas facilitate pedestrian and cyclist access, further enhancing the riverfront experience. Number three, industrial manufacturing and distribution operations. West Sac has an industrial area and a port facility that supports trade and commerce. Properly maintaining roads in these areas are essential for efficient movement of goods, facilitating the import and export of products by investing in road infrastructure and maintenance. The community supports local businesses, job creations, and economic growth. Four, commuter connections. West Sac serves as a vital transportation hub connecting Sacramento region, well-maintained roads, along with efficient public transportation options, support seamless commuter connections to downtown Sacramento and surrounding areas. This benefits residents, employees, visitors, reducing travel times, easing congestion, enhancing overall accessibility. And last but not least, neighborhood safety and livability. Road maintenance contributes to the safety and livability of West Sacramento's neighborhoods, repairing potholes, ensuring proper street lighting, implementing traffic calming measures, improve road safety for residents, pedestrians, and cyclists. Well-maintained roads also enhance the overall appearance of neighborhoods, fostering community pride, making West Sacramento an attractive place to live and raise a family. Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 was signed into law by Governor Brown on April 28, 2017. It was a transportation investment to rebuild California by fixing roads, freeways, and bridges in communities throughout California. In order to receive SB One funds for fiscal year 2324, the city must submit a list of projects approved by council to the State Transportation Commission, or CTC, by July 1 of 2023. If the city does not submit the list by the due date, funds may be redistributed to other agencies. Capital Projects Department prepares a list based on current approved projects that will qualify for the funding. The proposed funding for fiscal year 2324 will be applied to the State Streets Pavement Rehabilitation Project, which we will talk again about in a few slides when we discuss proposed funding requests as well as approved funding projects, or projects that have already been approved. Now I will ask Mr. Roberts to come up and cover the next few slides.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is William Roberts. I am the Public Works Director for Operations and Maintenance. How are you tonight? Get a little bit here. These next few slides, I'll be discussing the cost of road maintenance and to provide context to the problem we are currently facing. Today's average cost to repave a mile of road is approximately $1 million. The more deteriorated the road is, the more intensive and costly the repairs will be. For instance, corrective maintenance activities when the road is still in good or fair condition may entail patching potholes, grading of the road surface, and minor repairs to the road structure itself. Whereas, corrective maintenance activities carried out once the road is already in poor condition are likely to entail a complete reshaping and resurfacing of large stretches of road. Analysis typically established that the annual cost of maintaining a road is small fraction of initial investment cost, usually some 2% to 3% for major paved roads. Failing to make this rate of investment over the long life of the road risks losing the benefits for which a road was originally constructed. Next bullet is crack sealing. Crack sealing is one method of preventive maintenance. This process entails placing an adhesive sealant into cracks on the pavement surface, preventing the infiltration of moisture and non-compressible materials into the pavement. This process costs approximately $21,000 per mile. Another method, but more costly, is asphalt overlay, which is our next bullet. Asphalt overlay is a layer of new asphalt applied over the existing base layer of asphalt at a cost of approximately $369,000 per mile. Overall costs for road construction are rising at painfully high rates. A good example is the cost of West Capitol Avenue. The prices to complete West Capitol Avenue 10 years ago would be $2 million cheaper than it is today. So it kind of gives you a good idea of the rising price of materials and also labor. The Pavement Conditions Index, PCI, provides a snapshot of the pavement health of a road. It is measured on a scale of one, or I'm sorry, zero to one, to 100, where 100 means a newly paved road. Many factors affect our city's PCI score. These include pavement age, climate, precipitation, traffic loads, and available maintenance funding. Price per square yard increases as road conditions worsen due to added labor tasks, including materials. So if you note the slide, if it's a PCI 70 and it goes down to 50, 25, and a zero, you'll see the significant increase in price due to additional equipment, additional materials, and also labor costs. This slide gives a depiction from FY 2018 to fiscal year 2023 road fund budget. Our Public Works Road Maintenance Staff currently consists of five maintenance workers. These employees not only repair potholes, but have other duties that consist of repairing potholes, striping, road signage, asphalt repair, spraying and mowing roadsides, curb and gutter repair replacement, and city-owned sidewalk repair. And I believe this next slide is the most popular slide, I think. Everybody's aware of the potholes. So, Public Works, this gives you a great idea of what we've been doing out there. So Public Works received 312 calls from customers just for potholes alone in 2022. Public Works repaired 2,969 potholes in 2022, and the average cost to repair one pothole is approximately $31. So it kind of puts things into perspective. As you can see, to maintain approximately 406 miles of roads and the number of calls from our constituents, we sure have our challenges to face. So at this time, I'll hand the mic back over to Ariana and she'll continue the presentation. Thank you.
I'm not saying anything.
No, I'm good.
Thank you. All right. So let's talk about what we currently have approved in terms of projects. We've, this slide shows it grouped. I tried grouping so it wouldn't just be a long list of projects. We're starting off with what we consider these ongoing programs for on-call arterial pavement repair and on-call striping. They're used in tangent depending on the project. This can be used citywide on, and this is typically used, a funding source for Public Works to use when they need to tap into additional funding. You can see that it's about half a million that's already approved and they utilize these pots of money. Planning and feasibility, this list, there's many stages and steps that go into repairing of roads. And so this is to demonstrate that it's not just you go out and you design and you construct. A lot of times that you start off, for example, you are all aware, all aware of the Sacramento Ave Complete Streets Corridor Plan that's being, a ton of outreach is happening right now. These are the beginning stages, doing outreach, getting the environmental done that it takes in order to redo a street like we did with West Cap. Many stages and many years that go into preparing for those projects. And lastly, the Port Area Infrastructure Complete Streets is another good example where it's currently in the design environmental stage. It has a budget about 100, 810,000 right now, and it's in process right now. It's just something that, you know, the community can't see. It's going, happening behind closed doors right now because there's things that need to be done. And part of the scope right now includes things like preliminary design, right away needs determination, environmental review. This project, the boundaries for this project include Harbor Boulevard from US 50 ramp to Industrial Boulevard, Industrial Boulevard from Harvard, Harbor Boulevard to Palma Desi Bridge, Lake Washington Boulevard from Palma Desi Bridge to Southport Parkway, and Southport Parkway from Lake Washington Boulevard to Promenade Street. We are estimating that this phase of the project is going to be done in spring of 2024. The additional phases are still not funded. We're trying to tee up this project to continue to go to 100% design and to go into construction. This is one project we've been talking a lot about because we're trying to tee it up for IIJA funding in the future. So we are actively looking currently for future funding opportunities to help move this project, continue to move this project along. Current approved funding for construction. This slide is a representation of some of the projects. I just want to be clear that we're highlighting projects that are, will affect road condition. It's nowhere near the level of portfolio that the city has in terms of capital projects. We just spent an entire presentation talking about one park. There is also a ton of other projects, facilities, parks, all these other things happening at the same time. So I want it to be a clear representation that these, you know, these CIPs are being selected specifically to highlight what we're talking about right now, which is road condition. So the first bullet point, the H-SIT projects, it's a group of CIPs that we're taking together, total the budget's about $1.9 million. This includes about, this includes 12 intersections receiving safety improvements. It could include median improvements, new pedestrian crossing, new ADA curb ramps, high visibility striping for crosswalks, stop bars, and new signage for advanced warnings in crosswalks. This will improve the safety. That's the intent for the funding source. It also includes improvements for traffic signal, improvements at five intersections. And the construction contract is scheduled to be brought before you July or August of this year. So in a few months, you will be seeing this moving forward. The next, so bullet number two and bullet number five is actually being taken together. And so I will talk about them together because next, actually, next council meeting, the construction contract for both of these are going to be coming before you, July 19. And this is to award the construction contract. This is to advance the Neighborhood Pavement Preservation Program, which will focus in areas in Bridgeway Lakes and Bridgeway Island neighborhoods. This is a, the program's goal is to preserve the city's investment. So it's, it's putting slurry seal over to maintain and preserve the roads. And then for the arterial street pavement repair, the, this, the focus for this funding is to specifically focus on major digout repairs, and it's limited to the areas on our arterial roadways that are, experienced the major pavement failures such as sections, the worst sections of Southport Parkway between Lake Washington and Ramco Street. This is the CIP that's going to address those. Both, this is going to be under one contract, so the efforts are going to be done by one company. And so the contract's coming in July, but it's going to cover all of the CIPs listed under the second and the last bullet. Riverfront Extension Project, I think you all may be aware of this one. As you all know, it's currently underway. It should be completed in November of 2023. And the last bullet point there to mention is the State Streets Road Rehabilitation Project. I mentioned in a previous slide, I was going to be referring back to it. This is the neighborhood that it's, including is, the boundaries are just north of the Deep Water Channel. Boundaries are Jefferson Boulevard to the east, Park Boulevard to the west, Stone Boulevard to the south, and 15th Street to the north. The State Streets neighborhood infrastructure actually consisted of three projects, rehabilitation of the sewer lines, replacement of the water lines, and now rehabilitation of the pavement, pavement. Both the water line replacement sewer rehab projects are completed, and so now we're going to be entering into the rehabilitation of the pavement. going to be entering into the rehabilitation of the pavement. The design and construction management contract for this project is also scheduled to be, to come before you, July 19th, so at the next council meeting. And construction is expected, once the final design is done, to begin in early 2024. So moving to the future, what is being proposed, and you'll see this was included in the budget workshop that was done in May, and also will be included in the budget item that's next. Again, these are just highlighting some of the items that are in there, not the comprehensive list of all the CIPs. And for 23, 24, what I've done is kind of grouped them together in a similar fashion as I did for the approved projects to highlight a few. Mr. Roberts did a great job of explaining PCI, and the Pavement Management System Update CIP is going to go towards updating our, our plan, which is needed, and it's due, and it's the best practice to keep it up so we know where we are, so we can focus our resources and efforts moving forward and create a plan based on data. And so that's something my engineers are nerding out about, and very excited to have that coming up. So we're looking forward to working on that this year. The Marshall and Higgins Public Safety and Traffic Calming Improvements Project is also another one that's going to be helping look at a very large section. Our transportation planning group is going to be heading that one out, and it's to tee up the project for construction. We're in a need, in an area that's very much needed for safety concerns. And then lastly, I mentioned the Port Infrastructure Plan. This is to provide additional funding. As I mentioned, we are trying to continue to keep the momentum of that project, and so we are proposing additional $1 million to keep us moving forward with that project. For construction, you will see requests for additional funding on several projects you've already heard. I mentioned briefly all, all five of these programs. In the next two years, we're going to be asking for additional support towards these efforts. And as you can, you can see from my presentation on the previous slide of the approved funding, we are working on them and they're moving forward. They're already moving forward. So this will help continue to move all of these projects forward to, to completion. And make sure I don't. In addition to this request, the proposed budget's also requesting two additional maintenance workers for Public Works to also help alleviate the maintenance concerns, the ongoing filling the potholes and the ongoing maintenance as well. So in conclusion, road maintenance is a challenge that we, we require prioritization to make progress, and this is why we are providing this presentation tonight. Although we're making progress, we aren't close to where we need to be in terms of our road conditions. I think we're all aware of that. But city staff is committed to work forward, work towards finding solutions and presenting additional options in the near future for funding. Although we are putting forth an effort, it'll not be enough. And so it needs to be front and center of our funding strategies moving forward. And before you soon, city staff will be bringing council options for future funding strategies. And so something to look forward to. With this, that concludes my presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any council members have questions? We'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Good evening. I have lived at my residence in Delaware for 20 years, and Delaware Avenue is part of the project area of the State Streets proposed project. If you took advantage of an offer last summer to come and tour the potholes of the State Streets, you got an opportunity to see the condition of the streets. They have been largely ignored for the 20-plus years that I've lived there, and they are in dire need of some, some love. As noted in the tables that was presented by the staff, the State Streets Rehabilitation Project has received funding from the SB funds since 2017. However, to date, only one part of that project has been completed, and that was in 2017 for a design portion. Since that time, every year except for one, it has been on the list of funding, and yet nothing has been done that we, as the neighbors, can see. We can walk out and we can see, oh, something has happened. So my question to everyone is, where has the $4.1 million gone that has been allocated to this project? Because we have not seen it. I'm happy to see that, that it is continued on the list, but I would like to see that something, we see that there is some process, progress. Two things came up during some of the discussions. First is the concept of stakeholders. We, the neighborhood that live there, we're part of your stakeholders. The second is transparency. We want to know that things are happening. When I went last fall around to my neighbors, after I was assured by the project, one of the engineers, that we would see some work this spring, I was laughed at by my neighbors because we've been hearing the same story since 2017. Now I had to go back then to the spring because it's not happening this spring when I was told it was going to happen. I had to go back and say, nobody believes you anymore. You say you're going to rehabilitate our roads. It's not happening. So those are the two things. And as we go forward, I would like to see a budget of where did our money go? I would like to see a timeline of when I can expect somebody going up and down my streets and fixing it. Those two things will give us a lot more confidence in you as a city and that things, and that the projects will go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, closing the public comment, bringing it back to council for questions or comments. Members of PZO Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the workshop on road maintenance. It's something that we've talked about for a while, so that edification is lovely. I'd like to talk about the State Streets Rehab Project first, and then I want to come back to just some general questions about potholes. Thank you, Suzanne, for coming tonight. This project has been on our radar for the last several months about moving it forward, and the great news is we've got over $5 million allocated towards this project. Can staff help me clarify, quote unquote, where the money went? Because my guess is it's just sitting in a bank account waiting for us to send it. And also with the construction management contract that comes to us next month, what that will look like and if it will have that timeline for what the residents in the neighborhood can expect to see.
Yeah, but Arianna, give that answer.
Yeah. So for this project, the strategy previously was to use internal staff to do the design work. And as I mentioned in presentation, this is the third piece of two other pieces of redoing the water and the sewer, and so funding went towards that. And we have changed our approach to make it go faster. And so we're taking the, that's why we're coming back with the contract on, in July. The contract will be a combination of construction management and design, so we don't have to have two separate contracts for that. And so we can finish up the design and take advantage of the construction season early next year. And just like we've done in other projects such as Linden Acres, we're going to be sending up, setting up a website that has information for the neighbors to be able to access. It'll have an email that's created just for the project. Folks can contact the project manager or the team that's going to be on that and be able to have more updated information when they, they need it. But there is, because it's a residential area, there is significant outreach that's done with the neighbors and engaging them because of the impact that it will have on them. Did I answer all the questions?
Yeah, and I wasn't aware that a website was going to go up, which is fantastic. The city does a nice job on those. When do you think we could expect to see that?
Oh, timeline. So with the design and construction management contract, basically, once you execute the contract with the company, you establish a timeline of the milestones for their deliverables. And so we will have a much better idea once we kick off that contract and be able to provide a better idea of when the construction contract's going to go out, when it's going to go bid and award. Those would be the next steps. But we anticipate that, again, happening early 2024, and being able to update, very similar, again, to other projects that we've done where it's worked in our favor to have kind of a centralized location where you can kind of point people to. That's consistent, the messaging can be consistent throughout.
That's wonderful. When do you think the website would launch?
We can get that going with the design, and we can do that now. There won't be as much information on there, but we can definitely get that set up because it's done internally with our folks and have a place where people can provide that feedback. And then as we move into other stages of the project, we can certainly update, you know, update it and even, you know, outreach, do more further outreach.
I'd love that website to get up sooner rather than later because this is a project that has been talked about for a while, and it's just so many times, it's just lack of information. It's just so frustrating when people are trying to just figure out what's going on in their neighborhood. I do, I have gotten positive feedback on the utility patching that happened already, and folks at Scooter the Neighborhood have actually seen that part done. And I know we're moving in the right direction and that now that we're finally moving forward with the construction management and design contract, anything that we can get in writing online to the neighbors so that they feel confident that we're doing what we're saying we're going to do is really important to me. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
If I could just add just a little bit historic context there, too. I mean, the State Streets project overall was a major undertaking for the, the water and sewer portion alone. You know, and, and roads cost, as Bill pointed out, they cost way more to not just fill potholes, but to replace roads than, than they did just a few years ago. So this is a project you're likely to see a repeat of SB 1 funding and other funding being allocated to State Streets until it gets done. To go a little further back, because I used to live in, I live in Westmore Oaks now, I used to live in State Streets, and Councilmember Spiezio, you did too at one point, and we know, we're well aware that it's, it's an area very much of need. And Measure K originally funded a lot of road rehab, and the State Streets didn't quite get on the Measure K list back, back in, you know, we're talking way back now, but we know it's, there's a reason it's our top neighborhood priority, and we're going to, we're going to stick to it until it gets done. So I understand the frustration that it's taken this long, but I think that the evidence is here in this report that SB 1 is our, our primary source that's going to get it done. And as Arianna explained, it is happening very soon.
Councilmember, Mayor Bertamaro Roscoe.
Thank you. And I, I'll keep it short. I, I do echo the sentiments. I, I am a resident of the State Streets currently, and, you know, I wake up, I know that some work has been done, especially with the sewer and the, and the water, but we are still behind. And I, I attributed it to the heavy rainfall because it's hard to do work during that time, but I, I'm relieved to hear that there's, there's something, you know, in store because frankly, we have a lot of residents who, you know, are almost immobilized by the, the way, the, the condition of our sidewalks and our roads. And I mean, you really can't jog without fear for, for, you know, injury sometimes on some of those roads, streets, I should say. So thank you to staff for the, the presentation. It was actually succinct. Years, what, five, six years ago, we were getting about a two-hour presentation about how expensive our roads were. So I appreciate that you made it very user-friendly, and it's frustrating, but I do have hope that we can tackle this challenge.
I have a couple of questions. So on the, the PCI, is, is what your engineers are about to nerd out on, are they going to look at the PCI of various parts of our town? Or could you, could you be a little bit more specific of, of what that study actually consists of? I'd love to know the PCI of Southport Parkway or even just
Sure.
any of the many roads in, in District 3.
Yeah, back in 2017, that survey was conducted, and it came back at a 60 as a citywide. I started in 2017, so I didn't see the report in detail back then, but it does break it down by neighborhood, and I don't know if it gives a specific PCI per neighborhood, but the overall PCI was a 60 back in 2017, which is fair.
And I guess I actually am a data nerd, and so when I, there are parts of the city that are, you know, reasonable, and there are parts that are actually undrivable. And I would, I would actually say if you've gone on Southport Parkway or you've gone on Industrial Boulevard anytime in recent, you, some of those are literally undrivable, and I have to hear about it every time I'm on it from my family. It's like if only we knew a council member who could do something about this. So for, I'm just, I'm, I've also heard from residents over and over and over again in my very short time, how because of all of the industrial traffic, both not only coming from the port that I, I guess we, we didn't necessarily plan for or anticipate, as well as coming from the business park area, that the constant pounding of huge 18-wheelers on streets that weren't designed to handle that kind of traffic have, have made what should have lasted for a very long time, again, almost undrivable. And so I personally would be interested, as your engineers are nerding out, what the PCI would be on, on specific parts, particularly because if we're going to be data-driven, that's really where we're going to put our dollars.
For sure.
So that, for me personally, that would make sense, and I'm, I'm sure residents would also want to know just comparatively, like, why is that street getting investment versus this street, right? Because they both feel bad, but some are probably worse off in regards to their metrics than others.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, into, in detail, basically 2017, and now, you know, we're looking at 2023. So the PCI back then was 60, so, you know, I think the projected date was, it turned into a 50 in, I think it was in five years, 10 years, I'm sorry. So in 10 years, we're looking at PCI roughly at a 50, so, which is, you know, blow fair. So for each neighborhood, I can get with engineers and provide maybe a detailed report back to council. You know, it's kind of hard, it's difficult because 2017, but in retrospect, we can look back and say, okay, according to the data back then, we're looking at, you know, an outreach of maybe 10 years, this is what you're looking at in, in those neighborhoods. So, and just to remind you, we're basically, we're putting staff in those areas, prioritizing those areas to pothole and patch as much as we can before the CIPs go into effect. So we're, we're putting efforts into those areas as well.
I really appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the, the staff doing everything they can with the resources that you, you all do have. I know in the budget that we have in front of us today that we will have an opportunity to provide even more resources for the team, so I'm personally excited about that. I would like just a little bit more information just in this presentation on some of the projects that are proposed along Southport Parkway, only because what I heard both in the 810,000 that is planned, that's happening right now in regard to the planning, and then the potential, I think it was, I want to say 1 million or 1.1 for, I think that was also maybe sustainability, you can click back. I think it would be helpful to know, because I will direct residents to this presentation, what that, what that really consists of, right? Because we have a short-term plan of, of filling potholes, again, along Southport Parkway, along Industrial, but we also have more of a midterm plan of, I think, resurfacing, you'll have to
Yeah, micro paving, resurfacing, we can do the mid, the mid-level plan for that. You're correct.
For that, for the mid-level plan, what is the general timeline for that?
Getting together with, with CP, can you answer that for me, please?
Thank you.
Ariana has more detail for that.
This is great, thank you.
Okay.
So that, that part of Southport that we're going to be doing the digout and doing the middle, medium-level repair is the arterial pavement project CIP that's being coupled with the neighborhood preservation program that's going to be coming back for construction contract award consideration July 19th. So it's going to follow, I can't tell you exactly the construction contract until that contract gets executed, then we will have more information in a couple of months, but it, it should be done by the end of this year. So it's going to, people are going to see things happening.
And, and by see, when you, when we talk about resurfacing, I, I like to use West Cap Ave as just an example so you can understand the difference. What happened that we just did on West Cap Ave, which cost roughly 17 million, give or take, was we, a complete dig out, right? That was not resurfacing, that was redoing the entire street. I want to make sure when people see this, they understand what we're actually saying.
Yeah, that was a complete mill and fill, which is a Yeah, that was a complete mill and fill, which is a grinding of the complete surface, and starting from scratch, which is very expensive, as opposed to micro-surfacing, which where they take an inch, or an inch and a half to two inches off the surface, and then fill with AC asphalt. So, if you're milling and filling like West Capital, it's very expensive.
Okay.
And it was also, I'm sorry, just to interject, it was also a complete streets project, so we built sidewalks, you know, so it's similar to the Southport project, the, the one that we're going to get eventually.
That's the long-term, right?
Right, because, because you'll get bike lanes, sidewalks, curb gutter, the whole, the whole deal. We call that a complete streets project versus mill and fill.
Oh, no, correct. Drainage, you know, and resurfacing, all that goes into one, so your curb and gutter, your sidewalk, your drainage is very important, because without that, your road will deteriorate much quicker without your drainage. So, correct.
So, don't leave yet. And so when we, so when we talk about sort of this, this mid, this mid-range plan, which we're going to hopefully have, and people see by 2024, that will, it'll feel, at least initially feel, initially like you're on a new road, um, ish. Does this feel accurate?
That's a correct statement.
Okay.
According to the PCI and the neighborhoods, like Southport Parkway, we'd be lucky to get the micro-surfacing, because when it was originally designed, before all the trucks and the warehouses that were coming in, so now we're looking at, wow, this is huge. So what, looking at probably a mill and fill with that complete area, as opposed to maybe parts of Jefferson Boulevard, where I think we can micro-pave that at a much cheaper cost. So, so yes, that's correct.
So, again, the mid-range would be this, this taking off the inch of Southport Parkway? I just want to make sure we're speaking the same language.
Yes, that's correct, and also parts of, like, we call it asphalt, complete asphalt, which is micro-surfacing, which we can take an inch off to three inches and go maybe 40, 50 feet and do patches, instead of just a complete mile or two or three miles of road. So, because parts of Southport Parkway is breaking up, so would it look bad if we do, you know, you know, 20 feet and then skip three feet, then it looks terrible, so a complete mill and fill would most likely be appropriate for Southport Parkway, as opposed to Jefferson, where we can do that, we can go maybe 40, 50 feet, and the next stretch is maybe a mile down the road, so we can, we can do that for micro-surfacing.
And then just for me, the, I have like two more questions on this, because we get a lot of phone calls on our roads.
A lot of emails.
A lot of emails as well, and so I think it's just important to be able to send some our residents to these questions so they can actually hear from staff.
Sure.
Um, will it be able actually to stand up to the 18-wheelers, right? So we're going to do this middle of the road, because I've heard from residents that, okay, you're going to fill, you fill these potholes, and then you put a, drive a big, big truck over it. How, how is that going to actually hold up?
And that's a great question. With Southport Parkway and the condition is, is right now, that's a, that's a really good viewpoint of what we're receiving now with the heavy traffic and the load. So when it comes to that, the engineers will step in and say, okay, what is the best design according to traffic, you know, the traffic load and the number of vehicles, and also heavy equipment and diesel trucks, 18-wheelers? So, you know, I go down there every day, I see hundreds of trucks going back and forth. So I think it's come down to a survey of the area of the street, and then say, okay, what, what's, what will work for Southport Parkway? And that design will come back and get approved and, you know, to council and everything, and we'll say, okay, that is the best design. So, they'll take a look, the engineers will take a look at that, saying, okay, this is the best design, and other places could be like a complete easy mill and, or I'm sorry, with a micro paving, so.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Again, just, just again, on big picture here, this is why you'll hear us over and over restate the importance of crossing an enterprise, and it's a combination of two things. It's one, it's the complete streets project that will, you know, deliver all the complete street improvements, bike lanes, sidewalks, but that, that alone will also not make it adequate for the truckload that it's receiving today because of the build-out of SIP. The enterprise crossing, and I pointed this out to anyone who will listen, imagine a world where a truck route is exclusively from the Southport Industrial Park across Enterprise to the freeway, that doesn't touch Southport Parkway in that section, and also relieves a lot of traffic at the Harbor Industrial Boulevard intersection. So, the combination of those two long-term projects, the Southport Parkway Complete Streets Project and the enterprise crossing, will do wonders to alleviate the pavement conditions going forward on Southport Parkway.
Higgins, so I saw that on there, I just want to clarify, only because I don't see the detail on there for residents, and as I was going door-to-door, I heard a lot from residents about not feeling that kids were safe going up Higgins to get to high school, and so as part of what we're proposing here, is this just going to be designed, would it be construction of sidewalks?
So, that, this is funny, because we keep having to go up and down, so sorry. Next time I wear my heels. When I'm doing a presentation with him. So, this project is not for construction.
Okay.
This would be to look at the feasibility of it, hopefully get some design work out of it, but yes, it is to look at those concerns, because there's several ping points, there's the roundabout on Marshall, there's, you know, several things we've all heard about. That's why we expanded the scope to include all of that area.
So then for Higgins, it would be potentially the sidewalk, and maybe some other safety concerns, and it sounds like maybe my colleague has some questions on that. For Marshall, you would specifically be looking at the roundabout, as well as the industrial traffic that goes down that, or is it mainly focused on the roundabout?
I think it's going to be looking at the entire design of it.
Okay. And, and potentially with that, what would come out by 2024 would be the, the 100% design of what it could be, the proposed?
So now you're, so the actual, this actual project is not going to be in Capital Projects, it'll be in transportation planning, most likely, so I don't want to speak for them and commit them to a timeline, because it's going to depend on all the other things that they have going on, but I can get back to you on that with some clearer information, I just don't want to throw anybody else under, you know, set a commitment for them, and then
I get it, I want an accurate timeline, so I personally will follow up, because I've heard from residents that, that, again, Marshall matters too for them, and that roundabout is not workable for those, those neighbors in that community. Thank you.
Any comments? You don't? Okay. First of all, thank you for the presentation today. I know it's, it's been a long time coming, because we do get a lot of, you know, interest from the community. It's one of the, aside from public safety, one of the biggest concerns is, you know, the status of our roads. There is a pavement management report, plan, or something done in 2019 that I've been taking a look at, which provided an estimate citywide due to the conditions of the road and assessment that was done. Is that, so what you have here for 150,000 dollars, I think, is that what we're planning on updating?
Yeah, I think, believe it's 2017, the one I'm familiar with, but I think so, yeah, but you're correct. We have that allocated for a new study.
Okay, so then that's the new study. So that, that report is outdated, doesn't, like, the roads have deteriorated even more, it's more expensive. I think, I think the estimate of that was about 300 million for a citywide
That's correct.
for over a period of time.
Yeah, it's projected to go to PCI 50 by 2027, so if we don't do anything as far as, you know, if we continue doing what we're doing, but we're doing the best we can with potholes and some of the paving, but to do mill and fills, we're looking probably like Southport Parkway, down to a 50, so that's projected by the last consultant.
Okay. I, I, I received some kind of, you know, indication that, you know, when we did that, and there was a plan, that that, that plan was pulled, and I don't know what the reason was, you know, it could have been, you know, residual effect of the recession or whatever. But hearing from council members here in interest to prioritize getting that done, sticking to the plan, you know, once you got the plan, not just shelving it, and then we continue to get, you know, the complaints, but for us, as you know, as you heard, Councilmember Spiezio Hall, I mean, I don't want just one project, I want the, I had to get a hard copy of that plan.
So if I could, if I could answer that question, or that, that comment, so it, the pavement management plan was the precursor to kind of the, the approach to road rehabilitation that we are doing today. It wasn't the plan for, you know, $300 million is not going to happen overnight, so what we did with that information was prioritize portions of the city into two categories. One was called a community investment category, where roads like Southport Parkway, the major arterials, Jefferson, were sort of looked at as, okay, we need to build these corridors, you know, and then start investing and saving money for those. So a lot of the projects we're talking about today emanated from that strategy. The other part was neighborhood preservation, so places like the State Streets and some of the neighborhoods that are of various PCI conditions, there was a prioritization of which ones are we going to approach first, and partly the reason why the State Streets is before you as the first one post a pavement management plan, is because we were already doing the sewer and water upgrades, and it has, I'm going to guess that of a, the most populated neighborhood with the worst-conditioned roads. I think it's a safe statement. It's not that there aren't others in the city, but there were, that's why that project was prioritized the way it was. So, I don't want anyone to think that the pavement management plan was shelved, and it was, it was put away forever, it actually informed the strategy we have today. But, but again, it's a, it's a, you mentioned it, $300 million price tag to do the entire city, that's just not realistic all at once, so we had to prioritize which projects to do in order.
I, I understand. I think the presentation today was to understand SB1, the investments that we can make, you know, throughout the city with the, with the funding sources that are eligible to accomplish that. That's the other question, the funding sources that are eligible to accomplish that, where we have questions coming up, where, you know, you purchased the Pheasant Club, how come that could not fix the potholes? I, I, I understand, thank you, Councilmember. As, as you have been trying to get clarification, I'd like my opportunity too, please, thank you.
I probably should take that one as well. So, so I mentioned this before in council meetings, when, for example, when we did the acquisition of the Pheasant Club, the funding that was used for that project is, is coming from what we call our Community Investment Fund, Measure G. It's sort of our Economic Development Fund. That's funding that was specifically for types of investments like that. However, we are also using that same funding source for other types of road projects, like the Southport Parkway Complete Streets Project. I believe some of the West Capital Project, definitely of the roads that were redone in the Washington District, received Measure G funding. So it's not that it can't go to roads, but it goes to those major investment projects that really drive economic development forward, so, and a lot of the projects that, that we're talking about today, Southport Parkway is probably the best example. It's such an important corridor for the city in terms of its economic development, that it's absolutely appropriate for that funding source. However, neighborhood roads, the way that, that fund was set up, it's really not appropriate for, you know, say, taking the money and putting it to a project like the State Streets. So I know that, that the questions are completely valid, why, why does a city spend money the way it does? And not all funding is available for everything, that's the simple answer. There's, there's policies, there's, there's laws that dictate some of that, and in that case, the funding for Club Pheasant was out of that Economic Development Fund.
Okay, so that could not be used for the roads?
Not for neighborhood roads, but for, for major arterials, sure, the council would have that discretion, so.
They do, we do.
For, for roads that are appropriate use, and I named, I named some examples there, that are actually receiving Measure G funding, like the Southport Parkway project.
Madam Mayor, I mean, another, just on that point, because that's a good question, I've heard, could we have used that money for Bright Park, for example, as well? And so, I just, I've heard that question additionally, so I don't know if that's something you can speak to.
Like the uses of, of that funding source that we use for the Pheasant Club?
Yeah, there's, there's past policy that is still operative today, we have the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance in District, it's pretty much the same money. It's meant to be forward-looking, catalytic, you know, making investments in things that will grow the city, create additional revenue sources that will eventually support things like neighborhood roads and building Bright Park. It ultimately supports our general fund, it brings in new development impact fees, so that, that's the idea behind why that fund was set up. It goes back to the, the days of redevelopment in West Sacramento. The funding sources that are appropriate for roads, while, you know, while they're limited, they're also competing for other uses, so the general fund. We have limited SB1 dollars and, and other sources that can be used for roads. We'll just be blunt and honest here, we don't have enough resources to keep up with road rehab, and part of why we're doing a strategy around a long-term fiscal plan for the city, that's one of the major components to it. It's, it's road rehab, it's parks maintenance, it's police and fire protection. Those are the four core services that we need to be putting more resources and more thought to for the future, so that we can, we can, as the city grows, we can keep up with the needs.
All right, thank you. And with that, there are other investments we have made in the city, such as Project Home Key. Could funding sources like that be tapped for repairing our roads versus addressing other challenging? I think it's a priority of council, from my understanding, that we, we fund those things versus funding the roads.
Well, so you're mentioning the tax measures, and that's another important topic, glad you brought that up. So each tax measure has advisory language that was, that was tied to it, and then there's council budget policy that sets, you know, this goes back a ways to the percentages of allocations within those tax measures. Be careful there, because tax measures pay for positions, I think each tax measure is a little different, but the advisory language is what dictates how the funds can be used. So when you get the question of, hey, the city bought the roadway in, and we use Measure E money, you know, and it was, it was money for addressing the incidents and impacts of homelessness, well, that's, that's not money that, you know, you could take and, and just say, we're not doing anything on homelessness going forward, we're going to put it all towards roads, without sort of, you know, kind of violating the integrity of the advisory measure and the past budget policies that set those allocations up. It's not to say you couldn't change the allocations down the road, but there would be other vegetarian impacts of that, because like I said, a lot of those funding sources support staff positions and programs that are also big priorities of the city, like homelessness.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And these are questions that I receive from, from residents, as far as taking a look at what we do to invest in projects that they would like to see directed, everything directed to fixing our roads. And fixing our roads also helps, you know, I think in the main arteries, as far as being able to keep people who are coming in and out of the city from having, you know, hazardous conditions happen to their car, the safety of those that are driving, I've been hearing about the trucks, big old pothole, you know, just throws them off their lane, almost hitting other cars, been very scary to hear about those conditions, especially during the rain when we couldn't go out and repair the road, because it was just pouring rain during that time. I think the West Sac Connect app has been really helpful, some of the responses to the residents who do submit a request, and them not understanding that we are undergoing, you know, a plan for Southport Parkway, for example, because I, I still use it for Southport Parkway, I still, as I'm running, see, you know, a hole, I want to be able to let people, you know, our, our staff know there's a, there's a puddle, and you do go out and repair it, because I've seen the repairs done. And I, and I saw earlier today on Sacramento Avenue, you know, Public Works out with a bucket of, you know, black, you know,
Asphalt.
asphalt, trying to repair this massive hole on Sacramento Avenue. And, you know, I was a little concerned about that individual safety, because there were no cones or anything to, you know, just put a little caution out there that there's a man out there behind a truck, running back and forth with a bucket.
You know, with, with West Sac Connect, I think it drives, it establishes trust with our constituents as well, too. I mean, it's there for them to use, and for them to complain, actually to write a work order for us, and so they are our eyes and ears out there as well, so, you know, when our workers are out there driving around, they, they spot things, like, okay, you know, they can't see everything when they're out there, so it's really good for our constituents to utilize that app, and it's helping us a lot, so.
There is, like, Davis has a program, and I don't know in the pavement management plan, if we can also have a little section where we can analyze regional programs that have been somewhat effective, I'm hearing from the other council members as I ask them, on repairing roads, you know, that if there's a, if there's a pothole in one area, that, that Department of Public Works will go in and do more than just that one pothole, because when I do complain about a pothole, I get the, sometimes I get a response back, like, can you give us a site, you know, you know, what, what's the other street closest? I, it's like right in the middle of these two major streets, I can't quite help you there. And, and so, so I take a photograph, hoping that they can see a tree or something else that, that can help them identify a location for that pothole.
Yeah, that helps tremendously, because sometimes we get a call where it's like, okay, there's a pothole on Jefferson and a nearby area, cross street, so we go out there, repair the potholes or holes, whatever, and then we miss the actual call, where the constituents said, no, it's one block east of, oh, well, we didn't know that, so.
Yeah.
So we're, we're looking at ways to improve that, to communicate with our constituents, with John Robinson, to actually make it more easier, friendly, you know, for the customers, so.
Yeah, there's some people who don't have
Sure.
internet service apps, things like that, okay, so, so if we can take a look at, through the pavement management, I know it's an additional idea, but if we can take a look at some, some idea, but if we can take a look at some program that we can implement aside from West SAC Connect to get the community more engaged and, you know, maybe through Zen City, come up with some ideas, you know, Ask Survey, what would help you, what can we do for you to be more involved to help us repair our potholes? We're assessing this process. We had, you know, just kind of provide a little background on this meeting or whatever, just to provide more outreach to the community, to get more feedback on what we can do to, you know, get these potholes repaired, other than, you know, we can't track it all, it's a big city, we want your involvement. So if we can figure out some idea to get the feedback from the community, West SAC Connect is great, again, but that still requires you to have internet service. They could do the phone call, I don't know what other ways we can do outreach to residents. I don't know, off the top of my head, but that was just another idea that I wanted to include for the future. And with that, I just want to say thank you so much for this, today's presentation. We are really grateful. I know it's a lot of work out there to get this done.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. So I appreciate it very much. Arianna and Bill, appreciate it, thank you.
Early, oh, I was going to motion to.
Oh, can I motion?
Yes, you can. I'd be honored to move the staff recommendation for this item. Early seconds. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sulpicio Hall moved, and Councilmember Early Second, and Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, this item is approved. Next is Item 6, under Finance, is consideration of Resolution 23-57, adopting the fiscal year 2324 and fiscal year 2425 Operations and Maintenance and Capitol Improvement Program budgets. Roberta Rapper, please present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I know it's a little bit late, this is some important stuff, but we've been through it in a lot of detail a few weeks ago, so I'm going to sort of skip over the old stuff and focus on the changes. Let me figure out how to use this first. Okay, so you see, I have a small agenda here. The Bold Changes Since Workshop is really what we're going to focus on. I will give a general fund update, and then we'll look at the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan, because there are some changes there, too. So for background, city adopts a two-year budget. We are before you tonight to adopt a budget for the next two years. It's got to be adopted by July 1st, that is the beginning of our fiscal year, and we had a budget workshop on May 17th. And at that time, we went through a lot of information. We looked at these status quo budget assumptions, we looked at supplemental operations and maintenance requests and CIPs. We received feedback from council, from the community, and we've taken that information along with new information that has come since that time to develop our final proposed budget. Some of the things that we talked about in the last meeting, and I think it bears repeating here, is there is a continued threat of recession. We do have some current revenue impacts, including, you know, the slowdown of the housing market that impacts our property tax, which is our biggest revenue source for the general fund, as well as expenditure impacts. And everybody in the audience, and you as well, know fuel prices are going up, utilities are going up, insurance, and then our PERS rates, of course. And we've got operational gaps, which I know we've talked about a lot in a previous meeting, also a little bit tonight, and there'll be a more detailed report coming to you in the next couple of months. So those are the concerns or impacts. Our primary goals, taking those into consideration, were to have a balanced budget, to fund council's strategic plan priorities, and you'll see, I've listed several here are in the budget, and then to create capacity in the general fund to fund the council's other unfunded currently, strategic priorities, including employee compensation, filling operational gaps. We've talked about some of these, maintenance and replacement of technology systems, infrastructure, parks, equipment, roads. And so what does that mean for the budget tonight? You'll see, as we talked about in the last meeting, a continued shifting of eligible expenses and positions from the general fund to other appropriate funding sources, not a lot of ongoing general fund budget requests. And the reason for that is that if we've got these operational gaps to contend with, if the council hasn't seen and weighed in on those, right now is not the time to be making a lot of decisions on adding additional costs. And so as those came up, if they didn't directly address some of those operational gaps, they were either excluded from the budget or put in as a one-time funded, just for this two years, and the council would be able to make a decision on those going forward. So, the important part, changes. There are about three different types of changes here, there aren't many. There are a few changes to the line item or the status quo budget, the decision package requests, and some CIPs. In the line item, I completely forgot to add a position in the labor budget, so I've added that back in. Somebody will thank me, maybe many somebodies, but at least one. There were a couple of things that the council has approved in prior meetings, for example, $15,000 in annual ongoing budget for vehicle and supply costs for the Project Home Key positions that was omitted, so that has been added in. And more generally, we've updated our revenue and expenditure projections in the general fund. Our ICAP rate, which is the indirect rate cost allocation that we charge to CIP projects, has gone up quite a bit, so that impacts the revenue in the general fund, which is good. And we've also updated our cost allocation plan to include the supplemental requests. In the workshop, it's usually an estimate, we've updated that so that you are seeing final numbers tonight. Now I'm going backwards. Okay, so decision packages, there were a couple of changes here. I've also mentioned, these are in your attachment ones, so I'm sure you've already seen them all. There are a couple of proposed increases. These were primarily expected by council, we talked about these in the last meeting, but we have updated cost estimates for some of the technology system implementations, and so we've updated those. There are a couple of new requests for water treatment chemicals, our renewal information has come in, and we need a little bit of extra money there, and for our janitorial contract, about $30,000 additional there. And we have incurred expenses, as you are well aware, during COVID to respond to the pandemic. And under that emergency, those are reimbursable by FEMA, we've also received other funding sources. There's about $150,000 of expenses that are not reimbursable by FEMA that we need to provide a match for, and so I've added that in here as well. That would be a use of one-time general fund. Keep going backwards. Okay, capital projects, this is where the primary changes are. The Corpier project, we've added $2 million of ARPA funds. I believe there's either a contract that came last meeting or is coming next meeting for that. The City Hall HVAC replacement project, we've replaced some ARPA funds with General Facilities Fund and General Rehab and Replacement Fund, and added about $500,000 to that project. And the Bright Park Improvement Project, we've replaced ARPA funds with general fund. I can get into that a little bit more, I have a slide on the ARPA changes, but maybe we can skip it if I tell you now. Those funds, if they're not obligated, and there is a specific definition for the federal government to be obligated, either we have a contract executed with somebody to do the work, or we've got a position, employee position that's filled, or the funds are spent. If they're not obligated or spent, there is a threat that those funds could be clawed back. And I know during the recent debt ceiling negotiations, that came up again. We want to show that our funds are spent. And so there are some changes that we have proposed to that plan, so that in our next quarterly report, we can show 100% of those funds obligated or spent. And so we've done some swapping of funding sources, basically alleviating ARPA on some of these projects, replacing those with a general fund, and then utilizing the remaining ARPA funds to fund general government payroll in the general fund that creates the general fund that would go to those projects. So it's a pure swap, but helps us out in being able to report that those funds have been spent. So other CIP changes, the Skoda project, where we reallocated costs between water and sewer, it was funded primarily with water previously, and they should be proportionate among the different utilities that use it. The Marshall and Higgins project, I know you guys just talked about, it moved the funding from year one to year two to align with the project commencement, because the project budget was in year two. So part of the reconciliation I do is look at when we're asking for the money and when they plan on spending it, and then we need to get those in the same year. And we've added about $325,000 in TIP funds to the West Capital Avenue project. It is done, we're finalizing all of our grant reimbursement invoices. As we're going through that work with Caltrans, we're finding that there were some costs that aren't eligible under the different grants that we have, that we need a little bit of extra funding to close out that project. So, that's essentially it. This chart just shows you visually what that looks like, so these are just the changes. Total changes are about $3 million. Capital project changes are just under two and a half, and that's primarily the, which one, the Corpier project? $668,000 in supplemental O&amp;M request changes, $452,000 of that is one-time, and $215,000 are ongoing annual costs. So at the end of the day, oh, that's my ARPA slide. I can go back and get into whatever level of detail you want, I just want to give you the opportunity to weigh in and ask questions. Oh, my slide that shows everything is at the very end. So, general fund, somebody had asked for a general fund update the last time. This is a general fund update that includes everything that has been proposed in the budget. So we're showing revenues this year of $73 million, $72.2 million in expenses, about $800,000 surplus. That surplus is available for one-time uses going forward. And in the next two fiscal years, as we discussed in the workshop and also today, we're actually creating capacity in the general fund. And so we're showing a net surplus in the first year of about $2.4 million and about $3.5 million in the second year. I did go through how, what we did to create that surplus in the last meeting, but can get into any more detail if you'd like. And then there are quite a bit of one-time expenses proposed this year. As we mentioned, the, one of the biggest is really, besides the contributions to capital projects, is a five-year contract for the evidentiary camera replacement for PD. And that was chosen to fund it with one-time versus putting it in as an ongoing annual request, we can pilot that, and it would come back to council with data, as was requested previously before making additional decisions. And we're showing an ending fund balance after the two years in the general fund of about $6.8 million. So, projected reserve balances, we do have our general reserve, which is 17% of general fund expenditures. At the end of the two years, you're looking at almost $13 million there. And then there's about $500,000 in the staffing continuity reserve, again, we're at about 17.7% of general fund revenues. So, tonight, there are several recommended actions before you. We're asking you to approve the revised authorized position list. So with the changes to the positions that were proposed in the budget workshop, approve a revised salary schedule, we're required by PERS to post that each year as well. That includes all of the changes that were listed in the budget workshop as well. We're asking you to approve the revised ARPA spending plan and to adopt the resolution approving the budget for the two years. And really quickly, that is the end, but this is what I wanted to get to, this is an overview of all of the budget requests. You saw this last time, this is updated with that additional $3 million that we just talked about and the changes. So across all city funds, we are looking at a $54.6 million budget from city funding sources, leveraging almost $16 million in new grant funds. About $59.1 million of that is capital projects, a lot of those you've seen tonight and talked about in great detail. About $11.3 million is in our supplemental O&amp;M requests, and $7 million of that is one-time, $2.6 million in annual ongoing costs, again, across all of our 100-plus funds. And that is the budget that we are proposing. So I am ready to jump in, answer questions, or get into any level of detail that you would like, but I did want to keep my presentation brief. I'll let you drive, so. With that?
Thank you. Councilmembers, have any questions? Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Just want to, I gave extensive comments at the workshop, so I'm not going to reiterate them all, I just want to commend the 17% reserve, I want to reiterate my commitment to ensuring that we have that available lest we fall into a precarious position economically. Appreciate that we still have the $500 over-hire reserve. I spoke with Chief of Police, it's, we still haven't dipped into it in order to hire, to use it for hiring, but I'm glad of the sale, and I look forward to hopefully putting it to use. I know that we did hire several officers this past week, and looking forward to doubling that in the future. I did mention, I did see that you said that water treatment chemicals are, we have to do an augmentation for that. I know as part, as one of the board members on Regional Sanitation Board, our chlorine costs have quadrupled. I mean, to the point where it's millions of dollars that we, in order for to chemically treat the effluent. And that might have repercussions for us in our community-wide pool as well. You talked about water treatment plan, but I'm wondering, how is that going to affect our pool and whether or not we needed a reserve there on our end for, I mean, I'm just speaking aloud right now, basically because I saw your slide. And then lastly, and I know our city manager is going to hate me for saying this, but I appreciate the opportunity to create capacity, I just, I wanted to remain guarded about how many positions we find out of E and N, but that's neither here nor there, that's just my sole voice commenting on it. So with that, submit.
I do want to just respond to your comment about the staffing continuity reserve. One of the sort of benefits of conservative budgeting, right, we want to look at our revenues a little bit more conservatively, and there are typically savings at the end of the year in any fund, in the general fund in particular, because it houses all of public safety in our parks. And so as you have vacant positions that are budgeted to be filled the full year, that creates a little bit of savings. So we've been very lucky, we have done over-hiring. I've been asked a dozen times in the last year, can we go ahead and do this, can we go ahead and do this? And I say yes. Unfortunately, fortunately, we don't have to dip into the reserve, unfortunately, those over-hires last a very small period of time before another position's vacant, and we experience savings there that have been able to pay for that over-hiring. So it's not that we're not doing it, but we haven't, we haven't had to dip into the reserve to fund it.
Thank you. Councilmember Early?
I just want to commend you, you all. I have had a chance to meet with you several times, appreciate all the time, both from you and other staff, on being able to get into the weeds on our budget. I do want to reflect the fact that I think something roughly like $12 million is going towards our roads, whether that be in our public works team, in staffing, or in additional projects that we just heard about. And our budget is a reflection of our priorities. And so I commend both staff for hearing us, because I know it's something that we've all voiced, that it's, that we do need to invest in our city and invest in the residents that are here, and part of that is the roads. I'm also really excited about our cultural fund and some of the other things we're doing in regards to just reflecting the diversity of our community and being able to bring them together and also celebrate that diversity. And so, again, just want to call out those things, commend you all for hearing us, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo Councilmember Early's sentiment. You know, this, we've been working on this since February in strategic planning, and staff heard our priorities, and every department had worked really hard to put this budget together. And so coming from the workshop to now, thank you for tightening it up. Thank you for providing us a document and funding that really will implement our direction. And it's been a lot of work, and just thank you, and especially the extra time that you gave me to make me feel comfortable with these numbers. But this has been a work in progress for a while, and I'm very excited to be here to vote on it tonight.
Departments have been working on the budget since February, too, and they're probably really excited to start spending the money.
I hope that that's the case. I also want to echo my appreciation for everybody's hard work behind this and, you know, ready to get to work. It's going to be keeping us all busy. And, you know, as you are taking a look at spending the funding, and you need any support from any of the council members to tap, you know, anything to, you know, address any barriers as you go out, you know, to find, you know, either go out to bid, if you want us to go and help improve outreach, so that we can have more equity among those that are seeking to contract with the city, reaching out to those that can match funding, county, state, federal, we're all here, we're all very excited to pitch in and help you out. So I just want to continue that this budget is, you know, something I think is a result of all our hard work in pitching in together, making this happen on behalf of our city. And I greatly appreciate everybody's dedication for that effort. And just also, the Mobile Farmers Market and, you know, Welcome Baby, that was two programs with the American Rescue Plan funding that I have worked with the National Health Forum, so we can elevate it on a national level, on the good things we're doing here in West Sacramento. So just, you know, finding ways to continue to, you know, the American Rescue Plan funding is a result of a compromise, and your reference to the fact that there could have been a clawback, that is... And your reference to the fact that there could have been a clawback, that is, that is a threat. You know, we do see that there's a Republican Party subset who is interested in, you know, trying to take things and way back from the local jurisdictions, the harder, you know, funding we needed during COVID, because we had such a setback financially. And you see what the projects that are serving, how they're serving the community. I think the Corpier is definitely going to provide the resources. You know, people try to understand, what is a Corpier? I mean, it would be helpful, you know, to be able to articulate the benefit of a Corpier. So when I go back, all of us go back at the federal level to articulate how we spend our federal funding. We can say, we did it on behalf of, you know, making sure our community is thriving. And I think that the Corpier is essential for that as well. So just, just to be able to explain that we did fulfill what the American Rescue Plan funding was set out to accomplish, and we did it quickly, and we did it on a, you know, strong consensus as we have. And also, the fact that I think it subsidized the bonus funding that I understand it did. So I know we switched out some money, but I'm really proud of that effort, because I think that the bonus funding for our employees was really important to, especially our frontline individuals who, you know, couldn't take the time off, like those of us who were sheltered in place so that we can stay healthy. Frontline workers were not able to do that and becoming ill and not knowing the effects this would have on them or their family members. So just being mindful of, you know, those that are continuing to work hard on the front lines. I know there's more than just the police and fire, there are Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec. You know, certain things had to be kept up around the city and even our own staff. So just appreciate everybody's hard work, and hopefully they will benefit from what happened at the federal level to draw down resources at the local level for our own employees. And we'll continue to, you know, fight for you. We'll continue to pitch, you know, out, you know, and get what you need, what you deserve, so that you have quality of life that is beneficial, you know, for you and your families. And so, thank you, Robert, for all your hard work and, you know, providing the leadership to make this happen today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
Yes, ma'am. Alfred Melbourne?
Oh, he's not here.
Rhonda Pope Flores? I have no additional requests to speak.
They are not here. We're closing public comment, bringing it back to council.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the budget.
Councilmember Early moved, and who seconded? Mayor Protamorosco. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Protamorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right. This item is approved. Next, we will go to, thank you so much, Robert. Is our general administration function part two? Do we have reports from our council assignments?
I'm going to, I'm going to keep mine short, and I just want to say that I got a chance to go to promotional ceremonies for our, our police, and it was just really cool to see the transition even from folks who had worked as staff, who are now sworn officers. And so, really appreciate that. Thank you for the invite. I want to go to more, and it really was heartwarming. So, thank you.
I just, can I piggyback on that? When I, when I joined the DA's office, gosh, almost 19 years ago, I was assigned a mentor, and he had a little girl, she's about seven years old, and I watched her grow up over her time. And last Friday, she was sworn in as one of our West Sac police officers. So, it's really cool to watch the trajectory, and I'm really proud to have some great talent on our, on our team. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, I'll piggyback on that. I had the opportunity to attend the Youth Fire Academy graduation at Station 45, and it was an incredible afternoon. And this, what the students did there onsite that they'd been working on all week, from, you know, throwing ladders to climbing up to the rooftop, it was incredible. But what was super exciting was the young women in the room. And I was talking to the chief, thinking about, you know, what if possibly, possibly one of the young women in this room come back to work for our local fire department, maybe be our first female fire chief. So thank you to the fire department and the firefighter association for all the work on that.
Thank you. Just want to share that the last SECOG Board of Directors meeting, we did go through a couple of items, and one, I'm trying to track down my notes right here as we are speaking. So give me a second. The other is the race equity and inclusion. We met and we went over key points, such as the definition of racial equity, and making sure that we define that appropriately, so that it is inclusive of the various definitions, and just also identifying some of the various definitions of, you know, Latinx, Latina, you know, how that's evolved and how it's very sensitive and offensive from one to another. So I think that is just, and we, we had a member who had no idea this was, this was an issue. And I got to say that, I have to say that that, it's not, it's not, I think that this, this group helps, it's a diverse group, so you see the diversity among those who we have to educate. You know, and I, I, Councilmember Early and city manager, if you can also contribute to this particular background on the blueprint, to the 2025 blueprint pathways, transportation assumptions and evaluation. So SECOG received a robust presentation, and I know you had a, like a workshop. It's to set the final set of land use assumptions and transportation investments for the 2025 blueprint, right? And SECOG is undertaking a scenario planning effort referred to as pathways to better understand how to, how the land use and transportation decisions we make today may affect the future, and to help identify strategies that can remain durable across the range of futures despite changes and disruptive uncertainties as we've experienced. So just, if you wanted to add a little more from your, you know, just kind of providing the highlight of what happened in the SECOG board meeting, if you want to add a little more?
So, so this was my first blueprint, and I, I was kind of blown away by just the regional representation from everywhere, both at the staff level. We had several staff members there representing West Sacramento, as well as elected, all coming together. I thought SECOG and I told the executive director of SECOG did an amazing job of trying to convey where we had come from, but also being very data-informed. The CEO of Valley Vision gave a presentation on all of the data surveys of what it looks like in regards to transportation, commuting, pay, racial, you want to talk racial equity, just some of the racial equity differences in regards to jobs, median income, and also housing, both ownership as well as rental, both single-family as well as attached. And then we had group breakouts in which we worked at our table to answer questions about what is your vision and what would a potential resident look like who may want to have solely public transportation to get to work, but also wants to live in an urban area. And so it was, it was pretty amazing to be a part of that. I was proud to represent West Sacramento. I was proud to have our team representing West Sacramento. And it really, like I said, was both educational, informational, and hopefully, again, having our voice there helps to, to add that, what West Sacramento residents need and what the future for us will be as we are all regional partners. And these are just boundaries, but constituents don't see, and residents don't see those boundaries, right? In order for...
They travel out there.
Exactly, we do. We all travel, right? And so in order to really serve our community, we have to work together, and that was an opportunity to do that. Erin, I don't know if you want to say anything else on it?
Erin, just, just two quick points. One is, I was around when the first blueprint happened. I was at the very beginning of my career, so I don't want to date myself too bad there. But, but I think what's notable, and it showed at this event, is there were very few SECOG board members, let alone council members and county supervisors in all the jurisdictions in SECOG, that were in their positions at that time. And that's, that's most notable, because the blueprint is in a tenuous position right now. There's, there's forces that are, you know, I hate to contrast it as a, the foothills versus the flatlands kind of thing, but the whole premise of it is, is linking land use and transportation in a smart growth type of way, where transportation investments are linked up with smart infill, high-density housing investments for the sake of, so people don't have to sit in traffic, and so the climate doesn't get worse. So I think that was an important thing. I know SECOG is, you know, really doing the best they can to balance the different interests, but that leaves me, my second point, which is always a reflection of how important West Sacramento is in that overall, you know, the overall program of the blueprint. We are where most of that growth should happen, the high-density infill development, and we're also where a big chunk of the transportation investment should happen. So I never want us to lose sight of that, and so I think it was good that we had so many staff there that weren't around when we did the first blueprint, and, and the council was represented, represented too, because it's really your fight at the end of the day. You know, you're, you're our SECOG representatives, and, and we'll support you, but it is so important to keep West Sacramento at the forefront of that overall plan, because we carry such an important role in its overall implementation. So, and that's a long-term thing that we're going to have to keep fighting for. Thank you.
I have a, thank you. I have a question. Would we be able to provide a mini workshops so that all the council members here can kind of get a sense as to what it is? Is to like to provide some input, you know, along the way?
I'm sure SECOG would welcome that opportunity to have James Corliss and maybe others come in. I'm sure they're planning to do that as part of their, their re-up of the blueprint, but I can check with James on that.
I haven't heard that specifically. I know they've done it before, but...
I think it'd be a good idea to, for background for some newer council members across the region, really.
No, I, I will say that I, I think actually James might have said at the blueprint that they're more than willing, and I've heard James say a few times...
Right.
That he, you know, please invite us, we want to give presentations.
Great to have him here.
Yeah. And so I think he'd be excited to come.
Our community development director tells me they're doing, they're planning to do a roadshow, but we can maybe try to get at the front end of that, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, next I also attended the Funding Round Working Group, which is defining their role, the next, sorry, their next goals. And so our role is to define it. It's interesting to see equity was not quite a factor, like a metric included in the evaluation of applications, so it's now going to be. And now, we're trying to define what equity is. So we have a number of ideas. So we kind of went over what the history looked like in our next meeting is going. And there's this work group, and then there's a staff group that kind of drills down a little more into the details, so we just provide some high-level input. But the staff have more, more ongoing meetings. I know it's time-consuming, like all staff, you know, different things that they have to do. So, just want to say that I think it's still a good project to be involved in and be familiar with the history of SECOG, you know, Funding Rounds. Also attended the Fire Academy. Thank you, Chief. I just want to say, I am so proud of, you know, what we've accomplished. I've heard from, you know, family members, because we attended there, thanking, thanking us for holding it, you know, they didn't, it's not really available region-wide. And so we had other youth come in and see the incredible work that our fire department, our leadership has done, and provide that, continue, you know, training and open the doors for that to be a profession. And also to our police department, love to see the growth and, you know, seeing, you know, just the community resource officers become police officers. And also promotion, congratulations here to Sergeant Robert Brazier. So, I just, you know, want to congratulate all those that have received promotions and, you know, continuing to show an interest in being involved in our West Sacramento Police Department. For that. Next up is Council Calendar.
Hey, good evening. So a couple of things coming up. Tomorrow night, the Fire Academy is having their graduation ceremony at the Crest Theater, and that's at 6:00 PM. And then Friday, the Police Youth Academy is doing their graduation at City Hall at noon. And then Saturday is the Summer Night Lights put on by the Police Department at Bright Park, and that starts at 6:00 o'clock.
Thank you. And I think there's some Fourth of July parades or activities going on. Councilmember Solpezio Hall? Oh, that's, yeah, that's next week.
What? I'm doing, I'm doing something small in my neighborhood.
Yes. Did you want to share?
Well, it's, it's not an official event. It's just, we have a group of us in my neighborhood that get the kids together and just do a little neighborhood parade. So it's just a small little thing we do. If anybody's interested, reach out.
Okay. And thank you so much for the Juneteenth picnic. That was beautiful. So wonderful to have you do that.
Thank you so much, and thank you for attending. It was a really wonderful event. I heard a lot from community members about how happy they were to have something like this, and they hope that it will continue.
And City Attorney Report? Staff Direction from City Council?
He doesn't get a report?
Feature agenda items? Motion to adjourn. Subvo, all right.
Seconded.
Councilmember Solpezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Protamorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Yes, we are adjourned.